Welcome to the City Council's September 21st Special City Council Meeting. This is a teleconference meeting with City Council, staff, and members of the public participating remotely to ensure proper social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. Hello, my name is Drew Combs. I'm Mayor of Menlo Park for 2021. I would like to introduce staff and City Council members present. Vice Mayor Betsy Nash, Council Members Ray Mueller, Cecilia Taylor, and Jen Wilson. Staff present include City Manager Starla Jerome Robinson, City Attorney Nira Doherty, and City Clerk Judy Herring. With that, we'll go to Agenda Review. Agenda Review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from the City Council members under City Council member reports. Does the City Council wish to pull or modify any agenda items? Council Member Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I would like to pull J3.
Okay, so J3 will be discussed and won't be voted on, or there will be some discussion in connection with J3. Okay, any other items pulled? Okay, City Clerk Karen, can you call for public comment for closed session items D1, D2, and D3?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our closed session items, D1 Conference with Legal Counsel regarding existing litigation, D2 Closed Session Conference with Labor Negotiators, and D3 Closed Session Conference Regarding Public Employee Performance Evaluation of the City Attorney, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press *9 now. So this will be the final call for public comment on tonight's closed session items, D1, D2, and D3. So this will be the final call for public comment on tonight's closed session items, D1, D2, and D3. So this will be the final call for public comment on tonight's closed session items, D1, D2, and D3. So this will be the final call for public comment on tonight's closed session items, D1, D2, and D3. So this will be the final call for public comment on tonight's closed session items, D1, D2, and D3. So this will be the final call for public comment on tonight's closed session items, D1, D2, and D3. So this will be the final call for public comment on tonight's closed session items, D1, D2, and D3. So this will be the final call for public comment on tonight's closed session items, D1, D2, and D3. So this will be the final call for public comment on tonight's closed session items, D1, D2, and D3. So this will be the final call for public comment on tonight's closed session items, D1, D2, and D3. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you, City Clerk Karen. 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 Okay, with that, before we adjourn a closed session, there's a couple of announcements I wanted to make. Okay, with that, before we adjourn a closed session, there's a couple of announcements I wanted to make. Okay, with that, before we adjourn a closed session, there's a couple of announcements I wanted to make. Okay, with that, before we adjourn a closed session, there's a couple of announcements I wanted to make. Okay, with that, before we adjourn a closed session, there's a couple of announcements I wanted to make. Okay, with that, before we adjourn a closed session, there's a couple of announcements I wanted to make. Okay, with that, before we adjourn a closed session, there's a couple of announcements I wanted to make. Okay, with that, before we adjourn a closed session, there's a couple of announcements I wanted to make. Okay, with that, before we adjourn a closed session, there's a couple of announcements I wanted to make. Okay, with that, before we adjourn a closed session, there's a couple of announcements I wanted to make. One, we will definitely take a dinner break at some point before 8:00 PM. One, we will definitely take a dinner break at some point before 8:00 PM. One, we will definitely take a dinner break at some point before 8:00 PM. One, we will definitely take a dinner break at some point before 8:00 PM. One, we will definitely take a dinner break at some point before 8:00 PM. One, we will definitely take a dinner break at some point before 8:00 PM. One, we will definitely take a dinner break at some point before 8:00 PM. One, we will definitely take a dinner break at some point before 8:00 PM. One, we will definitely take a dinner break at some point before 8:00 PM. One, we will definitely take a dinner break at some point before 8:00 PM. Also regarding Agenda Item L5, 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 that public comment period may be limited 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 in the interest of time if there are lots of people who want to speak. in the interest of time if there are lots of people who want to speak. in the interest of time if there are lots of people who want to speak. in the interest of time if there are lots of people who want to speak. in the interest of time if there are lots of people who want to speak. in the interest of time if there are lots of people who want to speak. in the interest of time if there are lots of people who want to speak. in the interest of time if there are lots of people who want to speak. in the interest of time if there are lots of people who want to speak. in the interest of time if there are lots of people who want to speak. So the overall duration of public comment for that Agenda item may be limited in each individual public item. So the overall duration of public comment for that Agenda item may be limited in each individual public item. So the overall duration of public comment for that Agenda item may be limited in each individual public item. So the overall duration of public comment for that Agenda item may be limited in each individual public item. So the overall duration of public comment for that Agenda item may be limited in each individual public item. So the overall duration of public comment for that Agenda item may be limited in each individual public item. So the overall duration of public comment for that Agenda item may be limited in each individual public item. So the overall duration of public comment for that Agenda item may be limited in each individual public item. So the overall duration of public comment for that Agenda item may be limited in each individual public item. So the overall duration of public comment for that Agenda item may be limited in each individual public item. Individual public comments may also be limited from the standard three minutes. Individual public comments may also be limited from the standard three minutes. Individual public comments may also be limited from the standard three minutes. Individual public comments may also be limited from the standard three minutes. Individual public comments may also be limited from the standard three minutes. Individual public comments may also be limited from the standard three minutes. Individual public comments may also be limited from the standard three minutes. Individual public comments may also be limited from the standard three minutes. Individual public comments may also be limited from the standard three minutes. Individual public comments may also be limited from the standard three minutes. And so with that, and the additional note is, I know there are three items on the closed session, And so with that, and the additional note is, I know there are three items on the closed session, And so with that, and the additional note is, I know there are three items on the closed session, And so with that, and the additional note is, I know there are three items on the closed session, And so with that, and the additional note is, I know there are three items on the closed session, And so with that, and the additional note is, I know there are three items on the closed session, And so with that, and the additional note is, I know there are three items on the closed session, And so with that, and the additional note is, I know there are three items on the closed session, And so with that, and the additional note is, I know there are three items on the closed session, And so with that, and the additional note is, I know there are three items on the closed session, but I believe that the closed session will likely be fairly brief but I believe that the closed session will likely be fairly brief but I believe that the closed session will likely be fairly brief but I believe that the closed session will likely be fairly brief but I believe that the closed session will likely be fairly brief but I believe that the closed session will likely be fairly brief but I believe that the closed session will likely be fairly brief but I believe that the closed session will likely be fairly brief but I believe that the closed session will likely be fairly brief but I believe that the closed session will likely be fairly brief and probably in no more than a half hour or so. and probably in no more than a half hour or so. and probably in no more than a half hour or so. and probably in no more than a half hour or so. and probably in no more than a half hour or so. and probably in no more than a half hour or so. and probably in no more than a half hour or so. and probably in no more than a half hour or so. and probably in no more than a half hour or so. and probably in no more than a half hour or so. So with that, the City Council will adjourn a closed session and reconvene this regular meeting immediately following closed session. So with that, the City Council will adjourn a closed session and reconvene this regular meeting immediately following closed session. So with that, the City Council will adjourn a closed session and reconvene this regular meeting immediately following closed session. So with that, the City Council will adjourn a closed session and reconvene this regular meeting immediately following closed session. So with that, the City Council will adjourn a closed session and reconvene this regular meeting immediately following closed session. So with that, the City Council will adjourn a closed session and reconvene this regular meeting immediately following closed session. So with that, the City Council will adjourn a closed session and reconvene this regular meeting immediately following closed session. So with that, the City Council will adjourn a closed session and reconvene this regular meeting immediately following closed session. So with that, the City Council will adjourn a closed session and reconvene this regular meeting immediately following closed session. So with that, the City Council will adjourn a closed session and reconvene this regular meeting immediately following closed session. Yeah. 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 So thanks. So thanks.
City Court Karen, are we are we able to reconvene the meeting now?
Yes, Mayor Combs, looks like having all city council members returned to our virtual dais may reconvene. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I would like to reconvene September 21st, a special city council meeting, and we came back earlier than I I promised. I'd like to reintroduce staff and city council members present, Vice Mayor Betsy Nash, City Councilmember Gregory Mueller, Cecilia Taylor, and General Wilson. Present include City Manager Starla Jerome Robinson, City Attorney Nira Doherty, and City Clerk Judy Heron. City Clerk, can I would you please provide instructions to the city council members, to city council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, we ask that the city council remain on screen for the duration of the meeting, engaging your own webcams and microphones. Staff will engage their webcams and microphones to make presentations as well as respond to any city council questions. For members of the public who wish to speak on an item on tonight's agenda, after the mayor calls for public comment on that item, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you can press star nine. And just for all of those who are present, I did want to let everyone know that we are currently recruiting for our independent redistricting commission. Applications are available online, or you can email me directly. Website is menlopark.org backslash redistricting. That concludes my introductions at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, City Court Karen. I see Councilmember Mueller has raised his hand, so I will acknowledge him.
Mayor Combs, I just, I know the city, the city clerk, I stand by it, ask us to keep our cameras on. Given a current neck injury I'm dealing with, I'm just gonna ask if I could keep my camera off unless I'm being called upon, frankly, because I'm laying on the floor a lot of the time.
Sure, I don't I don't have any objections to that. Thank you for giving us the heads up. All right, with that, we'll go to City Attorney Nira Doherty to report out from the September 20th and 21st close sessions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's no reportable action from either close session.
Okay, thanks. And so now we can move on to the study session portion of the meeting. Study sessions are an opportunity for city staff to introduce an item that will require policy direction from the city council in the near future. City staff will provide a brief presentation. I will then call for public comment. After public comment, the city council will discuss the matter interactively with staff. The city council will not take an action on items addressed in the study session. The city council may provide direction to city staff for preparation of additional analysis or information necessary when the item returns to the city council for action. Here to introduce the item is Assistant City Manager Nick Pagaris.
Apologize for the delay, Mayor. It might be Joanna Chen who's making this presentation.
Oh, my apologies. Ms. Chen, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Combs and members of the public. I will share my screen. Are you able to see my screen? Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor Combs and members of the council. My name is Joanna Chen, the Management Analyst for the city. Here with me, I have TJ Carter, the Recycling and Compliance Program Manager for Rethink Waste, and Jill Mariana, the Executive Director of Rethink Waste. We have a brief presentation to provide an overview of the California Senate Bill 1383. So without further ado, TJ, the floor is yours.
And Joanna, it looks like we're seeing a notes view of the presentation. We need to change the display setting. Thank you.
Hello, wondering if we can go just back one slide. Yes. Hello, everyone. My name is TJ Carter. I am the Recycling and Compliance Program Manager at Rethink Waste. I'm here tonight to provide an overview of Senate Bill 1383, which passed to reduce short-lived climate pollutants in California. This bill has very large impacts to the waste industry. So I'll provide some background on the bill and how we are planning for implementation in the Rethink Waste service territory on behalf of our member agencies, which includes Menlo Park. All right, now we can hop to the second slide. So SB 1383 was designed to reduce global warming super pollutants like methane. To reduce methane now, we have to move away from landfilling organic waste like food, paper, and yard waste, which generates methane as these materials break down in the landfill. There are many benefits if we successfully implement California's super pollutant strategy, including fighting climate change, improving air quality, and less landfill waste, as well as providing millions of meals to Californians without enough to eat through the establishment of edible food recovery program. Next slide. SB 1383 goes into effect on January 1, 2022, and sets a 75% reduction of landfill organic waste by 2022.
Pause one second. Vice Mayor Nash, is there an issue?
Thank you. Yeah, I was wondering if it, I don't think it's just mine. Is it possible to move the slide over so we can see the entire slide, please? Unless it's just my display.
No, it's not just your display.
Thank you.
I think it just sort of needs to be right-sized, but it is cropped off on the left-hand side a bit.
Okay, great.
Excuse me. So SB 1383 goes into effect on January 1, 2022, and sets a 75% reduction of landfill organic waste by 2025, and a 25, a 20% increase in edible food recovered by 2025. Specifically, SB 1383 requires jurisdictions to provide organic waste collection for all residents and businesses, the establishment of edible food recovery programs, conduct outreach and education, procurement, record-keeping and reporting, and enforcement programs, and establishing an enforcement program. So it is quite cumbersome. So moving to the next slide. But we are fortunate enough to have so many great organizations involved. It will take an regional effort to comply with these regulations. Under SB 1383, jurisdictions are ultimately responsible for compliance, but they may delegate some responsibilities to public or private entities. These roles and responsibilities on this slide were scoped from an SB 1383 compliance plan that was approved by the Rethink Waste Board in November 2020. To implement SB 1383, it is expected Rethink Waste, Recology, the County's Office of Sustainability, and the city will all have a piece of SB 1383. Next slide. For the Rethink Waste Service Territory, we are pursuing a three continer container system for all customers. You may be familiar with this approach at the residential level with the blue, green, and black carts for recycling, compost, and landfill. There is the ability to provide waivers to commercial customers, including multifamily dwellings, based on space constraints for that additional container, and for those commercial customers who don't generate a lot of organic material. Rethink Waste is planning to lead the waiver review and approval of those applications on behalf of member agencies. Next slide. So I want to touch on this, on the main SB 1383 elements important for compliance and implementation. The SB 1383 ordinance, enforcement program, procurement, collection and processing, edible food recovery program, and then a few items that thread in between these elements. Next slide. So under SB 1383, jurisdictions need to adopt an enforcement mechanism requiring residents and businesses to participate in organic collection. Rethink Waste has developed a model ordinance specific to our service territory to support our member agencies on this requirement. Though there are areas in the model ordinance that the city will need to complete that are specific to Menlo Park. Rethink Waste has hired a consultant who drafted our model ordinance and is available to help you customize your ordinance. Under the regulation, the ordinance will need to be in place by January 1, 2022. Next slide. For enforcement of SB 1383, Rethink Waste will conduct outreach and education, help identify and educate non-compliant entities, and will pass along complaints to the city. For Menlo Park, this includes adopting the ordinance, issuing notice of violations, and assessing penalties. There may be the need to hire additional staff or support for enforcement. For the edible food recovery program, the County's Office of Sustainability has offered to lead the enforcement for that piece. Next slide. So there are two main aspects of procurement required by SB 1383. One part that is more straightforward requires jurisdictions to obtain recycled content paper products, like office supplies, printed materials, and janitorial supplies. The second piece is far more complicated. Jurisdictions are required to procure recovered organic material, so like compost, mulch, renewable natural gas, or biomass, in amounts based on population size. For Menlo Park, we estimate that roughly 1,600 tons of compost will be needed to meet this target, and these costs could range from $140,000 to $400,000 annually. Rethink Waste and the County's Office of Sustainability are researching options to help jurisdictions meet these targets in a more cost-efficient way. But Rethink Waste is working to scope new services with Recology to meet SB 1383 requirements. At a high level, we are discussing the additional organic collection, outreach and education, and cost estimates. These changes will be in the form of Amendment 2 to a franchise agreement, and we anticipate bringing this to our member agencies in late fall. The County's Office of Sustainability has offered to take the lead on developing the edible food recovery program on behalf of jurisdictions in San Mateo County. Jurisdictions will need to, to adopt the memorandum of understanding with the County's Office of Sustainability for participation. Rethink Waste will support this through targeted outreach and education and capacity building support. And at a high level, Rethink Waste has hired contractors to help with this project, like technical assistance for the model ordinance and developing a recology scope of services. We will take the lead on record-keeping and reporting requirements, outreach and education, and issuing waivers. We have put together a memorandum of understanding outlining all the roles and responsibilities Rethink Waste will take on behalf of our member agencies. Fine.
Thanks TJ. And to summarize his presentation, the table, the table below summarizes TJ's presentation. So on the left, we have the SB 1383 requirements, which is to adopt enforcement ordinance to meet the procurement target, to increase recology services, to implement a food recovery program, and to conduct record-keeping, education, and outreach. On the right, we have how the city will meet those requirements, those state requirements, to amend the municipal code ordinance, to amend the purchasing ordinance, update city's environmental purchasing fee policy, adopt amendments to the recology franchise agreement, approve the county's MOU, and lastly, approve the SB WMA's MOU. So tonight, city, city staff is seeking council direction to prioritize city's resources to, to meet the January 1, 2022 implementation deadline. With that, that concludes our presentation for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter and Ms. Chen. City Court Karen, can you call for public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So for any member of the public wishing to speak on tonight's study session item, H1, Presentation on California Senate Bill 1383, Implementation to Reduce Short-Lived Climate Pollutants and Provide Direction to Prioritize City Resources to Meet Implementation Deadlines, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you may press star nine now. And our first speaker will be Tom Cabot.
Thank you very much. I've taken a look at the issue of fugitive methane releases and trying to gauge the size of those releases for what can be recovered or improved by improving the food scrap management versus what can be improved by electrifying buildings. And it looks to be like electrifying buildings can reduce about 50 to 100 times more than better management of the food scraps and organics in the waste stream. And so I think the, the right way to allocate resources will be to not divert, you know, divert minimum staff effort into food scrap management, et cetera, and put maximum staff effort into building electrification. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the last call for public comment on our study session item. H1. One more hand. Tim Johnston.
Thank you very much, Judy, and council members. As I look at this, I am really encouraged that there's a edible food recovery program that's embedded in this bill. I have seen far too much edible food getting tossed into dumpsters in downtown Menlo Park. Some companies by policy are required to dump their pastries in the dumpster at the end of the day, and I find that abhorrent and a credible waste of edible food products that could be put to good use at places like St. Anthony's and elsewhere. I have actually dumpster dived and taken some of that food and gone to St. Anthony's on my own, only to be slapped in the hand by the company, by the proprietor saying, you can't do that. And to me, it just sickens me that I see all this food landing in dumpsters, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comment. See no further hands raised. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, City Court Karen, and thank you, Mr. Johnston and Mr. Cabot for the public comments. So bringing it back to the virtual dais, is there someone who wants to kick off council discussion? Or we can start off, are there questions for, for Mr. Carter, Ms. Chen, or I also see Mr. Lam Ariana is on the phone, excuse me, is on the line, is in the meeting with Rethink Waste. So is there, are there any questions with them or comments that, that people want to make? Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you. My question is, what's the resources, what the city resources look like, and adding to Mr. Cabot's comments, is there something, are we, where are we targeting? Are we targeting the minimum level or beyond that? And if there's any comments about the, how much we should be doing with the food scrap versus the electrification if the goal is to reduce the climate pollutants? Thank you.
Mr. Lam Ariana. You're on mute if you were trying to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So nice to see you, and also Board Member Taylor and Tech Member Ms. Chen. So great to see you guys tonight, and thank you for your interest in this really, really exciting and major initiative. I wanted to just touch on one thing real quick, the comment that was just made a moment ago about food, food scraps versus electric. We don't see it as an either or, we see it as both, actually. We're taking steps in the agency to work with our contractors, our good partners at Recology, to evaluate electrification of their very extensive collection vehicle fleet, and also our second very large fleet. So that's a, that's a fleet that comprises of about 150 vehicles that are out on the road, you know, eight hours a day, five days a week, if not more. We also have a second contractor that runs our facility, that's South Lee Recycling. They have a long-haul truck fleet that is in the mid twenties, 24 units. And we are looking very, very carefully at that. In fact, in the spring, we're going to be running a second pilot for electrified collection vehicles. So we're really excited about the prospects. We're real excited, we'll be more excited when the unit price comes down of each of the vehicles compared to what we currently pay now and when the performance goes up. When we find that, that sweet spot, it's going to be very exciting for us, but we are doing some long-term planning of our 16-acre site that you, Menlo Park, are a proportional owner of in San Carlos, to plan for electrification and running high-voltage supplies there. Relating to the food scraps, this is a law that was debated quite extensively by the legislature, legislature, and then signed into law back in 2016. And since that time, until last October, it was in the rulemaking stage, which really, for those of us who are political wonks, we follow this stuff, that is a really long time for a bill to be in rulemaking session. And what it does is, I think it speaks to the importance and the largeness of what this bill and what this law is all about. So it touches many, many different levels. I love the comment about the food, edible food recovery. There's such a need in our community to recover edible food. I always make the joke that, you know, as an industry, we're in the used food business, but not in the edible food recovery business. So we are so happy that the county has stepped forward and taken the lead in that, and we are on your behalf, working with the county to, to provide capacity for them to really expand that. And by the way, my family and I have volunteered at St. Anthony's for Christmas, for Thanksgiving, you know, over the years, and it's just an amazing, amazing facility. So our hats off to the good folks there. So again, just to recap, we don't see it as an either or, we see it as both going on parallel paths. The original studies that created the impetus for this law identified greenhouse gases being emitted from landfills in California as being super emitters. So they were, they were creating much more greenhouse gas at a much faster pace, and those gases were deemed to be highly poisonous. And if they could find a way to divert the organic material that was sourcing that process at the landfills, we as a community will be far better off. So that's, that's the big picture. I'm happy, and I know my incredible colleague TJ Carter and Ms. Chen, we're happy to take any further questions.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Yeah, take my hand down.
Thanks, and I'm actually, I'm really excited to hear about those efforts and about this program. So thank you so much. And I'm very pleased that we'll be able to be working with the county on these. My question, what I actually intended was to, about the city resources and within the city, what resources are needed, both to support the county problem programs and also for our own. Thank you.
I'll defer to city staff for that.
And in the meantime, just let me say, I'm thrilled to be hearing about the electric vehicles. That's really exciting. Thanks.
If I could just speak to that, Mr. Mayor, may I just tell me, thank you, sir. We're very excited about this prospect, too. The two big barriers, as I mentioned, are cost per unit is, is a little bit ridiculous at the moment. I think our interest is ahead of where the technology is right now for this classification of equipment. But as you imagine, when you see those recology trucks rumbling out on the, out on the roads, you know, they're out there all day long doing the hard work on the front lines. They're incredible, but there's, there's a fair amount of emissions coming out of those things. So we want to do what we can to mitigate that. So there's, there's, there's been agreements that it sounds like in 2024, there's a subset of those 150 vehicles of about 18 vehicles that are support vehicles, pickup trucks for route supervisors, et cetera. pickup trucks from route supervisors, et cetera, that would be great candidates for the electrification. Uh and that'll probably happen in twenty twenty-four. Uh and then what we're very hopeful of is the last part of the transition of the fleet in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, that the technology will indeed be there for performance and that the pricing per unit will indeed come down when they start hitting scale at the manufacturing level. And um we would hope to have, in, in a perfect world, probably about fifty, I think it's up to fifty-four of those vehicles, which is really uh very significant. That probably represents about forty percent of that category of equipment. And that would take us through twenty thirty-five, the end of that contract. So really exciting times in, in our industry. Um it's fun being here. Representing you.
Ms. Chen.
And I could, uh Vice Mayor, um I could address what the city resources. Um and so it, one um city council decides to sign the county's MOU, the county will take the majority of the responsibilities. And as for city staff, uh will assess, will understand more about uh staffing capacity as we, as the SB thirteen eighty-three um gets implemented.
Just so, sort of following up and, and let me know if I missed something. But there doesn't seem as though there's much room for the city to act here other than in the affirmative, as has been outlined in the state law and based on our uh like pre-existing relationships with rethink waste and, and the county. Cause I, I don't see where it's, it's, but thank very much, correct me if I'm wrong, where, we're saying the city could do A or B. Right? It seems like we have to do both A and B, and if not, we're probably in trouble.
Yes.
Thank, thank you. And I could clarify uh staff direction for tonight because there is going to be a lot of work put into implementing the SB thirteen eighty-three. The list I had on the table, and I can share that table again, um i- is just direction on prioritizing cities' resources on what to do first. For instance, for the ordinance that requires two city council meetings versus um adopting the MOUs, which would require uh one city council meeting. And so um these efforts, it does take staff, different uh departments. It includes a city manager's office, includes the city attorney's office, and also includes um city council's time as well. And so um the direction that we're seeking is just prioritizing which one should staff do first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, et cetera. Does that clarify your, your question?
And, and just, uh, I, I'm sure it's in the staff report, but, but what is staff's recommendation on first, second, third, cause I, I don't have the, the framing to, to, to be honest with you, to, to take three and make it one. Um I would defer to you and the um, um, the experts in this area at, at, at rethink waste and at the county. So again, I mean, if the direction just, I, I would think the direction would be to proceed in a manner that is uh a, a result of your best professional judgment. And so, and, and that, that would, that, that would be fine and, and inappropriate.
Uh so if you would like to go with staff recommendation, that is a, a council direction um available as well, too.
I'm wel- welcome if, if any of my colleagues want to express a different direction, then that's really fine. Uh Councilmember Taylor, she's gonna tell you something different, so.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Actually, I wanted to know if you could put the, the chart up that you just mentioned. Thank you. And, and just to be clear, if we, we support the staff's direction, what would the timeline be? And what would you do first?
Uh if I could make a recommendation, I, I would suggest um going with the ordinance, the enforcement ordinance. Because I believe that it provides a backbone to the SB thirteen eighty-three. Of course, i- if the assistant city manager or the city attorney's office has something else they would like to recommend, um
If, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. The, to your question, uh Councilmember Taylor, how we, and I'm sorry to introduce myself, Nick Pagaros, Assistant City Manager. We will, with, with council's concurrence, we will move forward with the items uh as they are, as they become available and are ready for city council action. Certain steps require, certain items require two steps, others are just, are simply one meeting. I, I believe that in the staff report, there are um identified city council meetings for each of the items. But if I hear the mayor correctly, and if there's council concurrence on this, if you give us the go, we will uh begin working uh towards the January one, twenty twenty-two deadline to have everything in place.
Um and just in, in Mr. Pagaros is, just so I can understand, because Ms. Chen was talking about sort of resources. Is there something then that uh that doesn't get done or gets deprioritized not in the suite of what's being proposed here that the council should be aware of or, or, or? Yeah, I'll pause there.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, the really, I think the resources uh with the support of the city attorney's office and, and Joanna, Joanna or Ms. Chen's leadership and also our partners at SBWMA, uh the county uh and, and Recology. We anticipate that the majority of this work uh is a uh will likely land in the public sphere with respect to council meetings and any politi- and any uh public comment uh that may arise fro- from that. We are on a very tight timeline in order to meet the implementation of January one of twenty twenty-two. And so we will do that and um we will work as closely as we can with members of the community who may um have questions or concerns. At this point, it's somewhat of an unknown uh how, how many questions we will receive. So it's a little difficult to give you a direct answer on whether or not this will impact other projects. However, uh we do have Ms. Chen uh working on this project regularly with my support. And uh, and we will deliver if that's the count, with council's uh concurrence and direction tonight.
I just, uh Mr. Lam Ariana, I see your hand is up. Did you want to uh a- add something?
Yes, I, I would, uh, Mr. Mayor, if I could, um, so the action items tonight that are before you for your consideration here at the council level are really on the architectural pieces that will comprise the policy of the city adopting and sort of, um, I don't want to use opt-in because it is a mandatory uh program in that sense. But, you know, in terms of participating with this. So that's, that's step one, uh getting the ordinance done, getting the MOUs in place so that we have the structural pieces for our uh technical support that we can provide to you as well. Uh and then secondly, there'll be a um a rollout of the actual program into the communities. There'll be a focus on getting more commercial businesses uh to participate in organics and more multifamily dwelling properties to participate. That is the focus of, of what this um, uh this program is all about. So step one are the architectural, structural pieces tonight. And then you'll hear more, I'm sure, in the months to come, as we get into twenty twenty-two. There'll be a rollout and a big, uh, a big, big, big push to get more and more organic uh participation amongst uh businesses and multifamily, because that's where, that's where we're identifying the tons are to be diverted from the landfill. And then that material will go uh to better and higher uses than just going into the hole in the ground at the landfill and then covered with dirt. That's the lowest possible last resort that we want to do. We want to recover and this, what we consider to be a very valuable resource. The material can come back into the community as compost, as mulch, which are both really important soil amendments uh and also into the agricultural community. And we're working on a really innovative um program where we're taking food scraps from the commercial sector and working with wastewater treatment plants to harvest the biogases that are a, that are generated from there and creating a green energy source that will power the local wastewater treatment plant. So, you know, keeping those community benefits right here in the community. And that's something that uh our agency is on the, on the point on uh in the state and in the nation on that. We've got one of the very first units at our site, and we're very, very proud of them, very excited about that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Nash, were you gonna say something?
Yes, thank you. Um so I guess um I appreciate that this is all mandated and needs to go into place very, very quickly. My question, and I think what um my fellow council members were questioning as well, is there anything that is discretionary here? Is there anything where we're doing something that isn't mandated? That um because we obviously have um resource constraints, in which case then there's a decision, but if these are all just um looking to to work on and implement um for a mandated um requirements, then there doesn't seem like there's much choice. So is there anything that where we're, we're actually, we have discretion? Or is this just full steam ahead to get this adopted as is, and all of this is um state mandated?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash. Uh the, I would say that we are going above and beyond the state mandate through our uh multi-agency collaboration uh consistent with uh the general sort of collaboration in San Mateo County. And so if anything, uh through the economy, economies of scale, collaborating with the county SBWMA, we're actually assuming a lower responsibility, because otherwise we would be required to develop all of these programs. Uh so we are very appreciative of uh our partners uh across the county and as part of the South East Side Waste Management Authority. And uh, so I hope that answers your question.
So my question is, um actually, first of all, yes, it's really exciting that there are county, our county partners and that we're not doing this alone, that there will be across the county, um the same message. If there's any chance of doing education and outreach more quickly, I think that's um going to be critical to having this successful. Um and it really, um I cannot say it strongly enough how great it is to have county partners and that we're all in this together. My specific question was, is there anything that the city is doing above and beyond the county partnerships, which are terrific, where there's any discretion? Um or is this all just purely what everyone else is doing and we're on board, in which case fabulous?
Yeah, I, I am going to start and please, uh Mr. Lam Ariana and Mr. Carter, or Ms. Chen, if you have a different or anything to add, please do so. Uh we are uh proceeding with uh the most efficient program that, that we can identify at this time. Uh of course, uh as Mr. Lam Ariana had mentioned, uh the actual rollout in twenty twenty-two will, um will be a we'll, we'll find out more uh in that process if there is additional outreach. Work with our partners in order to uh comply fully with the uh state uh regulation or state mandate. But at this time, we, but we, Seth uh believes that this is the most efficient path forward.
Mr. Carter.
Yeah, I just, I just want to, to confirm, um, pretty much we are taking, you know, the direct route to implementation. So in kind of walking through the elements that are um kind of here on the slide, um thirteen eighty-three requires the enforcement ordinance and requires that to be in place by January one. So uh the SBWMA has provided a model ordinance to, to use, and that follows pretty directly with thirteen eighty-three requirements um to kind of meet what the regulations um are specifying. And then um kind of as, as Joe um noted, um the, the MOUs are really architectural. So like as, in order for the county to um kind of move forward with um establishing an edible food recovery program on behalf of jurisdictions, um they are putting in place the, the MOU to kind of formally delegate those responsibilities. And then similarly, the SBWMA has taken that approach, too, um to have Menlo Park formally delegate the responsibilities to us to lead the outreach and education and their record keeping and the negotiations with with, with recology. So it, unfortunately, thirteen eighty-three has given us a narrow window in timeline. But, but we, all of these items right here are pretty direct with thirteen eighty-three, what thirteen eighty-three is requiring.
Mr. Lam Ariana.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to address uh Madam Vice Mayor Nash's uh comment, do we have any discretion on this? So just to give you just a little background, um we've anticipated this bill coming back, um or this law coming back. And we have been evaluating and debating and discussing and planning lots of different options along the way. And we finally got into this level of staff recommendations that's now been adopted by our board. And now it's in front of you as each member agency in front of the elected bodies there to move forward. So to answer your question in a very direct way, at this point, um this is pretty much, uh the cake is, is kind of baked in this case. Um we've debated options previously uh there. And so what we're presenting here will allow you, the city of Menlo Park, to be in compliance of this law. So uh I'm not seeing a whole lot of flexibility in that particular regard, at least from the regional agency system. Maybe at the city, there's another take on that. Mr. Pagaros said, and Ms. Chen might have a different or a slightly different take from that.
Thanks for that, uh Mr. Lam Ariana. I, I think everyone's sort of speaking with the, the same uh sort of tone here. This is uh what you might call a study session FYI. Um and so, and so that, that, that's where it, uh, I, I'll let the uh, the, the Vice Mayor wrap up the discussion or questions.
Actually, I was just gonna say, thank you. It sounds like um there is nothing that the city is doing that's not part of what's happening with the county and, which is really what my question was. Is there anything the city's doing in addition? And it sounds like we're all, that's uh Mayor Combs said in lockstep, and that's great. Thank you so much.
We're in total alignment, yes.
All right, well, we'll thank you, uh Mr. Lam Ariana. I thank you, Mr. Carter. I thank you, Ms. Chen. And of course, thank you, Mr. Pagaros, uh for, for all of your work on this.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate the opportunity.
Right. Well, with that, we'll uh go on to the next agenda item, Advisory Board Vacancies and Appointments. Agenda item I, I want to consider applicants and make appointments to fill vacancies on the Finance and Audit Committee and the Library Commission. Um here to introduce the item is City Clerk Judy Herring.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Uh there's no official staff presentation for this item. As stated, staff is seeking the city council fill two unexpired vacancies on our finance and audit and library commission. And that does conclude my introduction.
Okay, can you, let's call for a comment on this item.
Of course. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item I, one, consider applicants and make appointments to fill vacancies in the Finance and Audit Committee and Library Commission. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a landline or your cell phone, you may press star nine now. Our first speaker will be Pau Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and uh Vice Mayor and City Council Clerk uh and City Council Members. It's a pleasure to be able to address you. I just wanted to raise my hand and ex- I just wanted to raise my hand and express my strong interest in serving on the Library Commission. This would be my first opportunity to serve in the Menlo Park city level. As my application states, my background is in public policy at the national level. Primarily in economic and national security affairs. But what I've discovered as I've grown, my family has grown here in Menlo Park. I have two little boys, age four and one, is that the library and of course, the parks in Menlo Park. Are really an institution here and they build civic strength and they really provide an opportunity. For people to get to know each other and people to interact, which I think are incredibly important things. Given what's going on in our national and regional context. I'm aware of some of the duties of the Library Commission. I recognize that it's a spectrum from both administrative work. And providing advice and counsel on allocation of resources. But I also think there is a role for strategic thinking and influence on how to position the library as a place. Where people of all backgrounds can come, learn, check out books. And it's really a testament to, to the role of government, I think, for both our younger citizens and, and our older ones. So even if I don't get this appointment to the commission, it's. It's really been a pleasure to kind of listen to your city council deliberations for the last hour or so. And I, and I look forward to staying engaged. So thanks for the opportunity and I will end my remarks here.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for public comment. Our advisory body appointment item. Seeing no further hands raised. Mayor Combs, we may continue.
All right, thank you, many, City Clerk Karen and Mr. Singh. I'm surprised you weren't scared off after. Sitting through our meeting for, for, for an hour and a half or so. So there, there is one applicant for the Finance and Audit Committee, right, and one vacancy, correct, City Clerk Karen? So can we just do that appointment by acclamation? Is, is that fine?
I think we will need to do an official vote for our Finance and Audit Committee candidate. So if I can have a motion and a second to appoint Stuart Soffer to the Finance and Audit Committee, we can take that.
Yeah, Councilmember Mueller.
I'll make the motion to appoint Mr. Soffer to the Finance Audit Committee.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So by roll call vote to appoint Stuart Soffer to the Finance and Audit Committee, City Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
City Councilmember Willison?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash?
Yes.
Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And so with that, we can go to our Library Commission.
No, were you raising your hand, Vice Mayor Nash, to make a nomination or because you wanted to clarify? Okay, so please go, City Clerk Karen, and then, and then I'll acknowledge Vice Mayor.
Perfect. So yes, we will be taking our nominations for one unexpired term for the Library Commission. Mayor Combs, you may go ahead in accepting nominations.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you. I would like to nominate Pab Singh.
If any further nominations?
I will nominate Ken Doniger.
Any further nominations? Seeing none, we will be voting by nominations received. So our first nomination was.
Wait, wait one second.
My apologies.
Vice Mayor Nash.
So I wanted to, if I'm remembering correctly, we do not have a District Two representative on the library. And so I'm wondering how strongly you feel that is, how important you feel that is, if that's not putting you on the spot too much.
Who, who are we? You're saying to me, or, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mayor Combs. Yes, I was wondering if the, if I'm remembering correctly, we have. We do not currently have a member of. Library Commission from District Two. And so I'm wondering.
Well, there is one, there, there's Katie Hardvick. So, but, but the, but, but the Library Commission is, is District Four heavy. But I mean, I don't, I think. You know, I think you can just sort of only slice that apple so many times. And so, but, but I'll acknowledge, but, but I do hear what, what you're saying. Obviously was something I, I, I noticed, but I obviously don't think that that should be. The defining factor in anyone's vote.
Thank you very much. But I wanted to know.
Councilmember Mueller.
Can you all share with me which districts these folks live in, since I feel like you guys were talking about other cake recipe. I've not seen the ingredients too, and I probably missed it.
Yeah, so I think, oh, there, there we go.
Okay.
And then just for reference, this is all of our advisory bodies. Highlighted here shows our currently serving members.
There's currently, you know, for, for District. Or three, excuse me, District Four representatives on the Library Commission and of the current applicants. Two are from, from District Four of those who have been nominated. One is from District Two and one is from District Four. I mean, I, I think, I don't know if it's as much the case now, but a, not too long ago. The Planning Commission was, was District Two heavy. It was, I think, I think there were like four, or something, District Two people. So obviously sometimes, I, I think that this is important piece of information. And again, especially in connection with, with very much the, the Planning Commission, to, to make sure that, that at least every, every district is represented. But, but obviously, I think you'll, you'll have these moments where one district may be overly represented in, in some of the commissions. Based on interests or based on a lot of different other factors. So with that, Councilmember Mueller, did you want to add something? Or are you good? Okay. Well, I think, I think we can proceed to the vote, City Clerk Karen.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So again, we will be voting one at a time based on nominations received. So our first nomination was for Pab Singh. So at this time, by roll call vote to appoint Pab Singh to the Library Commission. City Councilmember Mueller.
No.
City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
City Councilmember Willison.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
No, I'll say.
So with, go ahead.
No, please go.
So with a majority of the city council in favor of Pab Singh, Pab Singh will be appointed to the Library Commission.
Yeah, and congratulations, Mr. Mr. Singh. And just obviously, Councilmember Mueller and I weren't voting no to you. The way it's structured, the question is. Asked to vote no, but, but a great to see you wanting to get involved in, in the city and on the Library Commission. And, and really excited about all of the, the background that you'll bring to it. Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, just to extend my vote, district representation to play into that vote. So Mr. Singh is a very impressive candidate.
All right. Well, well, thank, thank you, Vice Mayor Nash. Were you going to say something?
Just that, I think we had, all three candidates were very, very interesting and hopefully they will stay involved in the process. It was not an easy decision.
Well, well, thank you. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a city council member, city staff member. Or a member of the public requests. That an item be discussed or continued. The fly doesn't like the consent calendar, continue to a later date. City Clerk Karen, can you call for public comment on the consent calendar?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on a consent calendar item. J1, accepting the city council meeting minutes. J3, adopt resolution number 6654, approving the funding agreement with Hibiscus Properties. For the construction of raised median islands on Chilco Street and authorizing the city manager to execute the funding agreement. And J4, adopt resolution number 6668, authorizing the city manager to rescind the portions of emergency order number two. In fall of 2021, related to the Ariaga Family Gymnasium, City Council Chambers, City Hall, and Ariaga Family Gymnastics Center. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a landline or a cell phone, you may press star nine now. So this will be the final call for public comment on our consent calendar items, J1, J3, and J4. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Okay, thank you, City Clerk Karen. So Councilmember Taylor, as your hand is raised, what I was going to do, and I'm, I'm recused. From J3, J3 in. Hibiscus. The properties, which is a subsidiary of Facebook. I'm an employee at Facebook. And so thereby recused from J3. Councilmember Taylor, I was going to. Call for a motion and a vote on J1 and J4. And then leave the meeting and then allow the Vice Mayor to take on to conduct the remainder on, on J3. But does, does, does that work for you?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so can, is, is there a motion on, on the consent calendar items that are not J3? Vice Mayor Nash. Okay, and I'll second.
I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Nash, a second by Mayor Combs to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item J3. By roll, or any further city council question or discussions? Seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
City Councilmember Willison?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash?
Yes.
Mayor Combs?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, City Clerk. Okay, with that, I will leave the meeting and turn it over to Vice Mayor Nash to conduct. Can, can, conduct the meeting in connection with, with item J3.
Thank you very much. So Councilmember Taylor, did you want to? Discuss, well, actually, J3 is adopt resolution number 6654, approving the funding agreement. With Hibiscus Properties for the construction of raised median islands on Chilco Street and authorizing the city manager to execute the funding agreement. Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash. And I believe this was, when I pulled this item previously, it was basically because. Of the street closure option. And so now that has changed, but I am still concerned. I think that outreach needs to happen to find out what the surround, the community would like to see. As far as a street closure that is just a straight 10 days. Or if there is a, a four week option to do just the weekends. And the plan that the staff has, one of the options, still calls for, I think it's four days out of the week for the street to be closed. So at any rate, I'm just, I want to encourage the staff just to, to do that community outreach so folks aren't caught off guard about it. And then the second piece is that on the staff report page, J3.2. It says the project is funded through the building construction, street impact fee. The total funds available is $926,000 and the, and the total that this costs is $389,000. So my question is, with the remaining funds, is it possible that that stays available for another item? That is on the agenda this evening? And I believe that's, I guess, a question for our city manager or for Ms. Nagaya. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. Viki Nagaya, Public Works Director. So thank you, Councilmember Taylor, for the questions. So I think in response to your first question about the different options and the, the cost for, for them. There was a summary added to the staff report. For this week that summarizes the, the options. So the, the weekend closure, weekend road closure option where the street would be closed from Thursday to Sunday. For, for four weeks was estimated to cost $495,000 instead of the. The base of 335 for the, the full closure for two weeks. So I think if the council's direction was to proceed with that option, what we would ask of the council. Is, is direction to amend the proposed funding agreement to increase the amount that could be allocated for, for this project. It would revise the numbers as well in table one. The inspection costs and contingency would increase. And so there would be then an impact to the, the overall budget. So I think that's kind of one, one portion of, of your, your question. In relationship to the, the proposed changes to the funding agreement. There is still a, a short time between now and when we hope the rainy season will begin. Which is when we're trying to finish the construction this fall. So there, there's a fairly compressed timeline for, for the community outreach process. So we, we are working as quickly as we can to figure out how we can get the word out. As, as well as how we can, can inquire about these options in terms of preference to the community. And then in terms of the, the remaining budget for, for this particular project. The, if they're not used for, for the scope of the project that's in front of you in, in this calendar item. And there's not other expenditures for them as part of the Choco Street reconstruction. Then typically what would happen is they revert back to the fund balance and then they can be reprogrammed for, for any other use. That the council desires. So if there's direction from the council as part of later agenda items. What we, we, I think we can take that and then what we would want to do is bring back the. The formalization of, of any of those budgetary changes as part of the mid-year amendment that happens typically in, in the early. Part of 2022. And we would have a better idea of, of what the actual expenditures were. And, and what the balance is in, in this particular project budget.
Thank you, Ms. Nagaya. Councilmember Willison, I don't remember if you had any additional comments, but those were, those were mine. Thank you.
Councilmember Willison.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash. Yes, so City Councilmember Taylor and I had an opportunity to meet with Ms. Nagaya. Yesterday, the time is confusing. So it sounds like if community outreach. And kind of having this be a community-driven decision, and as long as the council is comfortable with allocating more budget. Money to this project, if we want to kind of leave it up to the community to decide, it sounds like there's three options, A, B, or C. Then at this point tonight, we could basically approve the funding agreement. Up to the highest possible amount of those three options. And then staff could then engage in some type of community outreach experience and then be able to move forward with the preferred option. That the community desired, because you would have the authorization from council then to, to spend up to whichever option. The community decided. Does that, am I articulating what the direction would be if that's the will of the council?
Vice Mayor. Manager Jerome Robinson, please.
So I just want to make sure I understand the proposal and that is that the staff would do outreach and not return to the council. For a final determination. and that is that the staff would do outreach and not return to the council for a final determination?
Correct. And that's because, well, there, actually, there's two options. And I doubt that anyone is going to choose the full street closure. So which leaves one option.
Well, but it's still an option. It's just not one that you think people will select. Okay, all right, thank you.
My understanding was that, and Ms. Nagaya, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that that, and if I misunderstood, but if staff's comfortable with us approving a funding agreement up to whatever limit, then staff can have the discretion to engage with the community and councilmember Taylor to to pick that preferred alternative. Again, this is if the council decides that they're comfortable with those dollar amounts.
I, if I may, I do think the contract would have to come back to council for approval. What, so we can definitely do that. I mean, it will, I think, of course, we don't know what the weather will bring, but it will delay the implementation of the improvements.
And so just to make this, to be clear, so we're talking about what what is currently proposed is $335,650, and that is for the full closure. And that there's concern that the community will not be, that that will be unworkable. And so adding approximately $160,000 would be for closing it overlapping weekends. And a third option would be to just do one-way traffic, which would be an additional $110,000. Is that correct?
Those are, those are definitely the three options. The incremental additional costs that you mentioned, I think, just to clarify, the option three is in total about $300,000 more than the option one. So that those are kind of cumulative additional costs that you were quoting.
Right, correct. Correct, yes. And has any, has any outreach been done to the community to this point?
So I think the challenge with this project is that we haven't done outreach to the community about the road closure options because we didn't have council authority, their council authorization to proceed with the construction of the medians at all. So that the funding agreement is needed to be in place so that we can commit to the contractor that we're building the medians, and then we can engage on the specific kind of delivery of how to construct them with the options that we've outlined here.
And I guess, apologies, since with Brown Act, we could not discuss this before then. Is there any direction as far as how public engagement would take place from either of the, from council members?
Well, there would be, well, a few things that can happen is what the city already uses as outreach, and then also doing some outreach meetings. Honestly, is having a meeting, a virtual meeting to talk to community members about it and let them know what the options are. So I think that's, I mean, the old-fashioned way is, is either that or take information door-to-door to distribute or mail it.
So I think we can certainly follow up with you, councilmember Taylor, in order to, so that the options that are less impactful in terms of road closure, constructing the medians on the weekends or one direction of travel at a time, take four to five weeks. And so in order to complete the work by mid-November, we then need to provide authorization to the contractor to proceed essentially by early October. So we have about a week and a week and a half tops to make this determination. And so anything that involves mailing of information to residents is going to be prohibitive on the timeline that we have to make the decision going forward. So I think we're working as quickly as we can to figure out what types of outreach is possible in the next 10 days. But that's a very short timeline to get information out about a community meeting and then get it scheduled and out to folks as well. So we're going to be working against that early October deadline to be able to make the decision going forward also.
Member Taylor?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash. And so my intention was to make the motion to move forward with this project, knowing that the staff is going to be doing some outreach beforehand so that people are aware and to give some latitude as far as the two options. I am confident people are not going to choose a full road closure just looking at the amount of construction that's happening at the other entrances in the neighborhood. I just think it's best to let people know that there are two options. I'm saying two, but there are three. And at least do some outreach and asking what people are interested in. So going back to what I was saying earlier, my intention was to move the project forward, make a motion, and include that in the motion, and give the staff enough latitude where they can make some decisions on the spot so they don't have to come back to council for approval to go to the next step.
Thank you. Would you like to make a motion?
I will do my best. I make a motion to approve the agenda item J3. Ms. Heron? I know that you're listening. If you can help out a little bit here, please.
What I can do is, so the motion, well, the recommendation by staff is to adopt resolution number 6654 approving the funding agreement with Hibiscus Properties for the construction of raised median islands on Chillicohe Street and authorizing the city manager to execute the funding agreement. I want to pause here because there was discussion about the amount. Are we adding per city council member Willison an amount there, an up-to amount?
Please go, please.
If it is the will of councilmember Taylor to empower the residents to select one of those three options, then I believe then the motion should have an up-to amount of the highest option. So I believe that that would be the 605, 650 plus the other contingencies and whatnot. And I do want to say, I realize that this is, you know, we're, as members of the city council, we have, you know, a lot of fiscal responsibility here, and this is quite a large delta between these options. But I also want to acknowledge the incredible amount of impact that the Bell Haven neighborhood has had with construction and their community, and that this money is coming out of a fund called the, what is it, the Building Impact Fund or something like that, Building Construction Street Impact Fee, which I believe is being paid for primarily from development happening in District One. So that, this to me seems like an exceptional circumstance where I feel comfortable with that. That's my own opinion, but I hope that answers your question, Clerk Heron.
Does. So what it would be is adopt resolution number 6654 approving the funding agreement with Hibiscus Properties for the construction of raised median islands on Chillicohe Street, authorizing the city manager to execute a funding agreement for up to 605,650 plus contingencies and direct staff to engage with the community to select the preferred alternative.
Thank you. Let me call on councilmember Mueller, please.
My only question is, do you guys think there's any chance the community isn't going to select option three? I mean, honestly, like, is there any chance they're not going to select option three?
Councilmember Taylor, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller, I believe that the answer is, I don't know, which is why the outreach is important to find out. And at least there are options as opposed to we're closing the street and there aren't any options.
Yeah, I'm not against, I'm not against this. My only issue is just transparency around knowing it happened. So I don't need to come back to us first to vote on it again, but I'd like to report out, undo us, given to us as to what the amount is. So that's reported publicly. Otherwise, I just would never know what happened.
Yep, City Clerk Heron, can we add that to the motion or is that necessary?
I can add it to the minutes as the city council requests.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, City Clerk Heron.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. And so I'm going to read the motion in its entirety one more time. And then if city attorney Doherty has any questions or if I need to restate, please do let me know. I have a motion by city councilmember Taylor to adopt resolution number 6654 approving the funding agreement with Hibiscus Properties for the construction of raised median islands on Chillicohe Street and authorizing the city manager to execute the funding agreement up to the 605,650 plus contingencies and direct staff to engage with the community to select the preferred alternative. Okay, so do we have a second? Is that a second? City councilmember Willison?
Yes, it is a second. And Vice Mayor Nash, may I ask a question of councilmember Taylor? I know councilmember Taylor, there was another point that you were making about any leftover funds and Ms. Nagaya talking about how they would be returned to the building construction street impact fees. And I just wanted to see what you thought about that and if there was any additional feedback you wanted to give on that.
Thank you for the question. And what I'm, what I was hoping was actually to talk about the second, the next item, which is L1 together. But what I would like to see is if it's possible for those funds that are left over to make available for the next agenda item, which is L1, to talk about the traffic calming measures. And from my understanding, what Ms. Nagaya said, I didn't need to put it in the motion that it was, this will naturally come back to the council to look at CIP and funding.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Take it away, City Clerk Heron.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So by roll call vote, city councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
City councilmember Willison?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash?
Yes.
And the motion passes with Mayor Combs recused. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, I will ask the mayor to return. Wonderful, hello.
Thank you, City Clerk Heron. All right, with that, we'll go to the public hearing portion of the meeting. This is, is it, what did, I'll ask the city attorney and the city clerk, would it be possible to move to L1 now, or do we need to take the public hearing now?
I see no problem moving it if the clerk and city manager are amenable to that.
Well, then, let's, let's do, let's do L1. And so now I have to find L1 in my notes. So the, the first okay, what, I'll go through the whole, like, we're in the regular business portion of the meeting. Under regular business, the city council consider recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. So with that, I think we'll go to one, adopt resolution 6663 to approve permanent installation of Bell Haven Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan. Here to introduce the item is senior transportation engineer Kevin Chen.
Good evening, mayor and everyone. If I can just do a quick mic check to make sure that you guys are hearing me okay? Perfect, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and share my screen.
Pardon the interruption. For L1, Mayor Combs, are you recused from this item as well?
So, yeah, I saw that. I don't think that I am. But let's bring on the city attorney or staff to confirm, is there something in this, this item? Which, what recused me is this being funded by Facebook? Or is this, is there some conflict that you're aware of?
I asked for staff's response to that question, and then I can assist.
Yes, this is funded by Facebook.
Oh, okay.
Or will be if the council makes the decision before September 30th.
Okay, my apologies. Then I am also recused from this because I am employed at Facebook. And so Vice Mayor Nash will take over the meeting. And thank you, city clerk Heron. I just remember being recused from the one, and so that was a mistake on my part.
Thank you very much. So apologies if we've already done this. The first regular business item is L1, adopt resolution number 6663 to improve the permanent installation of the Bell Haven Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan. And actually, we have done this. Kevin is here to make the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Nash. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and launch my presentation. If I can just have maybe a show pen or acknowledgement that you're seeing the full screen. Perfect, great, thank you very much. So good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Chen, senior transportation engineer with the City of Mila Park. Very excited to be here with you tonight to present this item. If that is in front of you. Essentially, this is a project that's a long time coming. So I, a lot of information to digest. I will try to keep this as brief as possible and open the table for any questions. So with tonight's agenda, briefly going to go over the plan milestones. Many of you probably have been following this plan for a few years now. So you probably know this by heart. But however, for the benefit of the public, it's a good idea to kind of go over it. So the couple of the changes that were brought to the city council for implementation process, again, just briefly touch on that, what the changes were and how that kind of lead to the decision that we are here tonight. Finally, the recommendation and the next steps. So here is just a quick snapshot of some of the milestones. Obviously, a lot have taken place since the approval of the project and the plan. And we definitely went through a lot of outreach and various engagement process to the general public, to third-party agencies, including Couchlands, SFPUC, and the Fire District. So just wanted to highlight some of the work that many of our staff members and all the other agencies have put towards this as well. As I mentioned a little bit earlier, a few months ago, staff there come to the city council with an informational item about the process change as a result of COVID-19 pandemic. And I just wanted to take this time to highlight a couple of them here. Obviously, with regard to the survey, we were still able to conduct a community survey. However, in terms of the data collection, those were intended to be more of a snapshot in time. Of course, due to the pandemic, we all know that the traffic while is increasing has not yet returned to the pre-pandemic level. Also, I just wanted to quickly highlight that part of the survey that went into the decision-making that we are here tonight in front of you is that we wanted to make sure that we got the community support. So anything that we're moving forward, we were looking for 50% or more support from the respondents. Again, a lot of the information, data, and survey results were attached as part of the staff report, so happy to answer any questions at the presentation as well. So going into the main focus of tonight's item, I want to kind of briefly highlight this figure first and foremost. As I will be, the next few slides will be portions and sections of this draft plan. Just to, as a reminder, this is a focus in the Bell Haven area. Of course, with a focus on cut-through traffic, as many of you know, pre-pandemic level, with the congestion of Bayfront and Willow, we were observing and seeing a lot of cut-through traffic through the neighborhood. So this is the purpose behind the plan. So again, the next few slides, I'll be using this as a guide to talk about some of the recommendations that were made previously, and how those recommendations have either stayed or changed. That will be now the product of tonight's recommendation. So starting off, wanted to kind of highlight a couple of items that have been most likely the neighborhood residents, as well as some council members, hopefully have seen out there. The first one I want to highlight is a speed feedback sign that have been installed on Chico. This is one of those signs that flashes the speed of a traveling vehicle. The idea here is to hopefully encourage them to reduce their speed if they were going above the speed limit. So as part of the result of the implementation, one of the questions in the survey to the resident was whether or not they were seeing an effect, how effective it was. And of course, given the responses, and the percentages are in front of you. So we're definitely seeing 4% of the responders noticed that there was actually an increase with a 24% indicated there was a decrease, and then 70% indicating no change. So I'm using this first slide to talk over some of the contents. And then for the next few slides, I will briefly go over the numbers. So the main objective of the plan itself was to hopefully reduce cut-through traffic as well as speed, and raise some safety concerns that the neighborhood had presented to staff. One of the primary element in the plan was the installation of intersection bowlabouts. And intersection bowlabouts, in essence, has two primary purposes. One, it reduces turning vehicle speed. And then the second is increase pedestrian safety by reducing the crossing distance or your exposure to the street. On the two images below are two type of bowlabouts. The one to the left is more traditional, if you will, where there is a concrete for pedestrian to walk over, as well as the extended curb. The one to the right is what we call detached. Essentially, it's there to provide similar benefits, with the exception of a gap next to the, on top of the valley gutter. And this is primarily usually done to alleviate some of the drainage problems that you might see as part of the design constraint. So one of the survey questions, a couple of the survey questions that we raised for the resident, one was whether or not they would like to see this become permanent. And the support we received was about 52% of the respondents. But then, then, of course, followed by the second question, which was in terms of the priority when it comes to the design. And the reason why we had this question to begin with was because when we went out there, we put the temporary bowlabouts out there. And as time goes by, staff periodically would go out and do some observation. And we did notice some scuff marks on those bowlers. And that's usually an indication that there is a there is some physical contact, either with a vehicle, or perhaps with a bike, but maybe less likely with a pedestrian as well. So we definitely see some scuff marks. And as a result of that, we wanted to make sure that we asked the residents if they would prefer the pedestrian safety, which one is a high priority to them? It is pedestrian safety or vehicle access maneuverability? Because as I say, mentioned earlier, having bowlabouts, they do generate a bit of a they do slow down the vehicles, turning vehicles. And that's just the nature of it, so it does make them a little bit harder to navigate around a corner if you have to slow down a bit more. So I definitely, so as a result of the survey, we received about 57% of the responders indicated that they would prefer, they would highlight the pedestrian safety over the maneuverability. So a couple of other items that are coming up would also involve third-party agency approval. And this is one of them right here. This is the intersection of Willow and New Bridge. And there are essentially three improvements that staff is proposing. I do want to take this opportunity to highlight the third one, which is C. The essence of C is the installation of a right-term restriction. And this is in conjunction concurrently going with a Willow eastbound left. And the reason for this particular request was what some of the feedback that we received prior to the plan was due to the Willow frontish road. And with the eastbound left, so if you're coming off of Willow, sometimes you make that U-turn into the frontage road, there's a higher opportunity for collision with the vehicles that are waiting, that are on New Bridge, waiting to make a right onto Willow. So as a result of that, we decided to put in this implementation, or this request for improvement. And one of the questions that we asked residents was whether or not they were, what were their thoughts on this improvement? And I would say overwhelmingly, there was some concern about congestion, rightfully so. Particularly in the morning peak hour, as this will reduce the amount of throughput that we'll be able to have for the right-term vehicles. And as a result of that, you'll notice that the recommendation in the previous iteration was to have this installed essentially 24/7. However, given the feedback that we received, staff decided to reduce that operation time to just on weekdays from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. again, to address that, those concerns about adding more congestions in the morning. And that's essentially the reasoning behind that change. Also, just for everyone's benefit, for A and B, those are intended to be pedestrian safety features. For the purpose of this presentation, I do have some resource slides that if we want to go into some details, we definitely could. But I do want to take this opportunity to highlight C right here. The next improvement right here is on Ivy Street. So as I mentioned earlier, this is also a street that is controlled by the SFPUC, the Public Utility Commission. The initial recommendation was to, was a few forms. One was bowlabouts, as you can see, and then also some crosswalks. Because right now, there is no crosswalks that allow you to cross Ivy Drive, which would then present some difficulty, obviously. So staff went to the PUC with a series of recommendations, including what I had just mentioned. And the feedback that we received from them was that unfortunately, with the bowlabouts, there aren't any existing drainage systems out there. So it's very difficult, very difficult to install the traditional type of bowlabout. Hopefully, you will call the image that I highlighted a little bit earlier. Of course, we could also go with the detach, as I mentioned. That is one of the options, if you'd like to sort of alleviate the drainage problem without considerable amount of capital. However, the downside of that is it has a significant maintenance requirement. And also, when it comes to the SFPUC, they do sometimes have to do work there. So any construction would likely be impacted by this bowlabouts as well. So as a result of that, the feedback that we got was that we would not be able to see with the bowlabouts. However, there is an opportunity for us to add those crosswalks crossing Ivy. And in addition, we can look, utilize the existing medians out there, and where the opportunity is there to cut through those medians and create a protection. So that's a, something that we're recommending moving forward with. So again, this is one of the changes that you are seeing between the previous iteration of the plan to what we're recommending to you tonight. I'll summarize everything in one slide, but I won't kind of go into detail here. So I also wanted to take this opportunity to highlight New Bridge. We've received a good amount of feedback on this. So I want to take a few minutes to discuss this particular slide. As I mentioned before, we are, one of the main objective of this plan is to able to slow down vehicles and provide the pedestrian safety feature that those bowlabouts would be able to provide. And the original plan, we had recommended bowlabouts both on New Bridge Street, as well as all the crossing side streets. And of course, the images that you are seeing right now are what's currently out there. Those bowlers are flexible. As you can see, there are some scuff marks on there. They represent, they mimic the outline of a permanent bowlabout. So this is really a good test case for us to see whether or not we need to change our design once we move to the permanent feature. However, one of the feedback that we received, and this is both from the Complete Street Commission, which they have heard of this item, as well as some of the resident feedback that we received, was that it is creating a difficulty for some of the bicyclists that are going down New Bridge Street. Specifically, some of the lesser experienced, confident bicyclists because of the fact that they need to move out into, at the intersection level, they will need to move out toward the, toward where the vehicles are. And that interaction creates some discomfort for them as well. So that is definitely one of the feedbacks that we received. And as a result of that, the Complete Street Commission actually recommended that we stop the permanent installation on New Bridge Street. And the direction that we received was to explore some other alternatives. With that, my staff, however, tonight is recommending that we proceed with the permanent installation. And there's a few reasons why staff is recommending for that item. One of them is that, as mentioned a little bit earlier, this project is being funded by Facebook, so it's a great opportunity for us to take advantage of the financial situation here. Also, the second reason is that in our transportation master plan, the ultimate goal for New Bridge is to widen the sidewalk. And that is, again, one of the many feedback that we received many times from the residents. So the bowlabouts, once they go in, would work well with the future sidewalk. So it's another opportunity there. And then the third and the final one is that we're really trying to essentially uphold sort of the feedback that we got when the plan was being followed, which was, we really wanted to, the resident really wanted to see pedestrian, some additional pedestrian improvement. So in this case, we would like to proceed, the request, they're recommending the permanent installation in honor of that request. So here is just a quick snapshot, specifically on Ivy, some of the changes that we're making. Again, happy to answer any questions they might have with the illustration. So finally, before we conclude tonight's presentation, just a really quick summary of our recommendation, to staff's recommendation tonight, for your consideration. The first one is to retain the Chico speed feedback sign. As you know, those are, we received some positive feedbacks that they are slowing down some of the vehicles. Second is to proceed with the permanent installation for gateway features on New Bridge and Hamilton. In terms of the bowlabouts, we are definitely recommending the permanent installation on Terminal Avenue, as well as New Bridge Avenue. And then in terms of the signal improvement that I had a little bit earlier, staff is recommending the permanent installation, which if it's a goal tonight, we'll continue to work with the Couchlands to submit the final application. We already done some of the Of course, I do want to highlight that for the New Bridge right-term restriction, we are reducing the operation just with days from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And that's in response to some of the feedbacks that we see. And finally, that the two voted items, those are essentially some of the changes that we're seeing tonight. The first one is the New Bridge bowlabout. Again, staff is recommending the permanent installation of those bowlabouts, as well as on Ivy Drive. Staff is recommending the substitution of bowlabouts and racing sections with those median lanes that I have described a little bit earlier. And here is just a quick snapshot of the recommended plan. Again, an exhibit is attached to the staff report. So again, happy to reference this when answering questions. Finally, just my last slide for the next steps. With tonight's action, staff will be incorporating any direction that we receive tonight to the final plan. And then assuming an affirmative vote from the council, we'll be commencing the steps necessary to communicate with Facebook to begin the final design and implementation. So with that, I thank you for your time, and happy to ask any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any clarifying questions, just clarifying questions at this point? Councilmember Wilson?
Thank you. I have one clarifying question, Mr. Chen, about the, this hadn't occurred to me before, about the gateway treatments. So will those be in the street, and will they act essentially as bowlabouts in the street? How far, what is the dimensions of those? Of those gateway treatments?
Yeah, that is a great question. So the design of, the design of the gateways themselves, the base, I believe, is about four feet by four feet. But then the actual column itself is about two and a half to two and a half feet, so it's a square. I have some images that I'd be happy to share with the council as well. But in this case, I would say to answer your question, the answer is yes, they will sort of serve as bowlabouts. However, just given the dimensions, they are also there to sort of have a welcoming effect, if you will, to remind the drivers that they are entering a neighborhood and hopefully drive accordingly as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other clarifying questions? City Clerk Karen, could you please see if we have any public comment for this item?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item L1, Adopt Resolution Number 6663 to approve permanent installation of Bell Haven Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan, please engage that hand feature at the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. Our first speaker will be John Johnston.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am John Johnston, your Fire Marshal with the Menlo Park Fire Protection District. And I want to thank the city, and specifically with Kevin Chen, for working with us on this project. When the design was taking place, we actually went out and marked the streets, and we actually brought out our most restrictive fire engines to make sure that we were able to maneuver the streets with all of these proposals within the Bell Haven Neighborhood. And it was great because we found a couple of restrictions in areas that needed And it was great because we found a couple of restrictions in areas that needed some improvements. And then through this temporary installation allowed us to be able to work and navigate uh the streets with these and in place. And so right now, we are comfortable with the proposal that is in place. And I again want to thank the city and the staff for involving us in this so that we can ensure that we're able to provide adequate response. Chilco and Newbridge are fire district primary response routes. And so we are particularly uh sensitive to any type of restrictive devices that would delay our response to the community, especially with. Uh senior areas uh in this neighborhood and especially with the new projects on Willow Road. As we know, it'll will get busier. And so um I just want to say that we are supportive of the proposal. And if any, there are any other modifications, we are always in support of stop signs and not uh speed humps. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Sonia Elks.
Hi, thank you for taking my uh call. I am a parent of two children in Menlo Park. One at Mid Peninsula High School, which is just a few blocks away from the Newbridge Street um in Willow area where this is being planned. I appreciate traffic calming to very much. I'm a bike advocate, I'm a sustainable transportation advocate, safe pedestrian. Advocate climate environmental proponent of, you know, of environmentally sensitive. Um projects, but I wanted to express my extreme, extreme concern about the aspect of the Bell Haven Improvement Project. That is the concrete bulbous to put them on Newbridge on such. And to essentially eliminate the possibility of bicyclists being able to travel on the right side of the street where it is. Time and time again been shown that they are most comfortable and. Most likely to bike. I would love to think that all of us will convert to pedestrian and to walking. Um but the reality is that bicycle travel has to be accommodated. Because people are not likely from a from a planetary climate perspective. Everybody walking all of a sudden is not very realistic and and a concrete bulbout. Puts pedestrian safety at the expense of bicycles because it forces them into the lane of traffic and it's not necessary. There are ample ways to create a shorter pedestrian crossing distance by putting a. I love the the picture that you had of the divided or the separated um bulbout versus the traditional one. But that should be significantly wider. It should allow a bicyclist to pass through so that they cross the pedestrian crosses past the bicycle traffic, then they cross. Um and then they're ready to cross over in this shortened um space across the street. It can pedestrian and bicyclist improvement projects cannot come at the expense of each other, or we cannot survive. From a climate perspective, I I I I sincerely ask you to consider not putting concrete bulbous. The other thing is, concrete is the one of the most carbon intensive. And um you know, one uh uh extremely um. What's the word? And uh whatever the 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 word is for endangered when you have a um a material, it's um. It's in short supply. And we, to put this much concrete into the streets, it seems like a an enormous expense, an enormous carbon loss. And um uh using a resource, limited resources, that's what I'm trying to say. So I I would ask you to approve the plan without the concrete bulbous that will almost certainly cause bicycle. Uh navigation of the streets to decrease in Menlo Park in this area because it will force them into traffic. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for public comment on item L one related to the Bell Haven. Transportation Management Plan. Seeing no further hands raised, Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you very much. And so let's open up the council for comments, please. Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash, and thank you, Mr. Chen, for the the presentation. I'm not sure if this information is in the staff report or not. But just wanted to find out the the distance of the the streets. Uh there is a lot of concern, especially on Newbridge, um with putting bulbous and it's because of the width. Is there a standard um standard width for bulbous? Or is it just? Or isn't it? I don't know. The street is narrow.
Definitely. Thank you. Thank you for that question, Councilmember Taylor. So on average, I believe Newbridge is about twenty eight feet curb to curb distance. So in this case, the bulbous will most likely, uh and uh obviously, we we don't know the exact measures until we get to the final design. But we're probably looking at about three to four feet uh of a curb extension. So that that would be sort of the the general dimension and then that would be the width of the ball bout.
And is that the same, just a follow up question, is that the same for um Ivy? The, well, Ivy's different because the the space is wider there where you're suggesting to put the bulb out um on Ivy and Chilco. Um but thinking about the the side streets that run perpendicular to Newbridge, um what about the distance for those streets?
Right, so on Ivy, uh staff is no longer recommending a mobile installation. So uh but but to answer your question, in in the previous iterations, I I think those would be about the same, about three to four. And uh similarly to those side streets, um so for instance, the side streets on Terminal, the side streets on on Newbridge. Those would be also be about three, three to four feet wide.
And is it the same distance, the twenty eight feet?
Uh so it's generally uh about the same uh along the um the the minor streets. I believe Terminal is a little bit wider, um but but yes.
And then there's some concern about. Folks making a right turn or a left turn and there not being enough room traveling from uh Newbridge. Uh going down, say Carlton or Severe. Um that there's not enough room if there's bulbous. Um even if there's bulbous, not bulbous on Newbridge, but there there's bulbous on this on the side street, so on Carlton, Madera. And um severe that there would not be enough um space to turn. So one car would have to wait for the other.
Right, definitely. And and there is a possibility when uh dealing with like commercialized vehicles, et cetera, et cetera. But generally, the 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 observation we're making is that um. Again, due to kind of the nature of wanting those vehicle to slow down, they generally could uh like a typical passenger vehicle. They generally could make that turn, uh provided that they they slow down uh at the at the turn. So if they were driving with previously, they might not be able to make it. And so that's the. The nature of of why they were there in the first place is to force those cars to slow down a little bit more. Uh definitely, there's some uh concern that we have a larger larger truck um on both sides. There's definitely uh an opportunity, maybe uh a little bit of a right away being yield necessarily. But uh generally, that would not wouldn't be the case for your typical passenger.
Thank you. And then just one other, um well, this is more of a comment. At my, I guess you could take it as a question as well. Um it's just looking at what is being recommended by staff um in thinking about um folks who have. Some visual impairments or have a stroller or using a a wheelchair or a walker and being able to maneuver. Um in a space um sidewalk or whether it's maneuvering a bulb out. So just have some concerns because we're we're trying to fit a whole lot in a space that isn't really designed for it. Um and I'm thinking about safety of pedestrians at the moment.
Right, yeah, and that's that's a great question. Uh and then. Without without going into sort of the the nuances of the design. What what we're recommending tonight for the ball bouts are the the sort of the firm permanent feature. Is the traditional ball bouts that I've uh that initially remember earlier. So in this case, it is essentially acts as a a regular sidewalk. So as a pedestrian, you'll be able to navigate uh on the sidewalk to the corners. And you'll be able to uh, you know, go down, use the ADA ramps to go down and cross the streets. Uh in terms of the making sure that everything will be ADA compliance. That is one of the the design requirements for for any new construction. So we we certainly will make sure that it's done properly as well. Uh but with the with the traditional ball bouts, that that should not be an issue.
I have a another um question. And that is with the the timing of the light um at Newbridge in Willow and then, of course, the frontage. Um was there, I know you said initially that you recommended having it twenty four hours that you have the right turn restriction. Um so just thinking of an average day between Monday through Friday and how much backup on Newbridge happens. So if you're not going to have the restriction on the right hand turn, so how can we improve the travel time? That it doesn't take thirty minutes to make a right turn from Newbridge onto Willow?
Right, yeah, that and um that that would be uh, that's another great question. I think generally, we are now looking into sort of um the the capacity. The that that we can generate from from this particular intersection. There are certainly uh improvements out there that staff can look at it. Um however, it is currently not part of this scope, um but we'll be happy to take that as a direction. Um and then um explore some, explore how we can uh further improve this area as a separate effort.
Thank you. I don't have any additional questions at this time.
Councilmember Wilson.
Uh thank you, Vice Mayor Nash, um and thank you, Mr. Chen, for your presentation. Um I think that it's really exciting to see trial um materials on the ground. Cause it really gives a real life um experience for community members to see what things look like. So I just wanted to thank you and encourage uh staff to continue to use those pilot measures to evaluate. Uh projects. And I want to thank Mr. Johnson from the Fire District. I've known him for years. Um and I appreciate the Fire District's, um you know, laser focus on making sure emergency access is is maintained as best we can. And I think um those of us on council have a shared value of our community well-being and safety. And I think what we're trying to do here is um, you know, calm traffic. And slow down cars and make this a more walkable, bikeable, um community oriented uh neighborhood. And the reality is, when you're trying to slow down cars, you're gonna probably have to slow down, you know. It it's gonna impact fire trucks, like you kind of can't have it both ways where cars go slow, but fire trucks have continued access. So how do we um balance um those desires and really work on making our streets safe? For people of all ages and abilities on all modes. And I think the way we do that is to be as reasonable as possible. And um councilmember Taylor and I again met with Ms. Nagaya yesterday about staff's recommendations. And um we um discussed quite a bit of changes and some concerns we had with various staff recommendations. Um and Mr. Chen or Ms. Nagaya, I'm not sure if if you can come on camera, because and um maybe what the. I don't know if you prepared a list of what we discussed. Um I, that was my understanding of of what might happen. Um but I'm happy um Vice Mayor Nash to kind of go through one by one. Um what those were. And then I don't know, um this would be my question for staff. If you'd like me to go through them all or if you want to um respond to each one um as as we go, so.
Or if you had a, if you do have the list.
I I do have a, thank you very much, um Councilmember Wilson. So I do have a list of some of the items, so happy to to share that.
I would appreciate that. And I think the intention here, um and I I really appreciate, you know, staff really trying to honor the original intention. Of this project and pedestrian safety. Um but I think we really need to think of all all users and modes of this is kind of, as you mentioned, we're getting the funding from Facebook on this. And so we need to make sure we're doing this right. And also, just because we have the funding, doesn't mean we should like just do things because we have the funding. Um so so this was some of the um issues that councilmember Taylor and I, councilmember did, do you want me to go through this or do you want to? Okay, so um let's start with Newbridge. So as uh one of our speakers uh brought up and we've received some other letters to council and I, as you know, ride my e-bike. Um and I've ridden on Newbridge and I would say at this point, I'm a pretty confident rider. And it's not that um only new riders have an issue with the bulbous as they are. I think any cyclist or person on a bike, as I like to call myself. What what the current uh bulbout situation does is it creates a very unpredictable. Um interaction between people on bikes and cars. Because a person on a bike, if there's room, a lot of times will ride to the right. But then every time there's an intersection with a bulbout, that person on the bike has to kind of merge with the car. And then the car is like, do you go in front of me? Do you go behind me? So every single intersection that there's a bulbout, there's this like um jig jag unpredictable interaction. So instead, um the recommendation would be to remove those bulbous on Newbridge. Um because it actually doesn't look like speed is the major issue on Newbridge. And to move forward with the complete street recommendation for bulbous. On the Newbridge corridor to just be on the side streets. So that the turns off of Newbridge would be slowed by those side street bulbous. So that's um that's recommendation number one for Newbridge. Um Mr. Chen, does it make sense for me or or Vice Mayor Nash, does it make sense for me to kind of ask staff to weigh in on that as I go or to continue going?
Um whatever you and um Mr. Chen decide is. Is most um workable, please.
Thank you. Uh so I I definitely share some some thoughts here and and of course, to to councilmember Wilson's point, definitely recognize the um. Sort of the the interaction that we're creating uh with the with the uh the bicyclist. Particularly at the intersection level where the ball bouts would be. Um and and certainly, wh- while we definitely recognize that that is as an inconvenience. And if that's the council's will, we'll we'll certainly proceed with that, that is um that direction as well. But um I I I do just want to recognize that you're 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 absolutely correct that there is that interaction that is uh sort of being created as a result of the ball bout. And with Newbridge uh being, that doesn't really have a um uh at the. Does have a bike bike lane facility at this point, uh that there's some certainly sort of um. Basically uh created the the need for the ball out. But but again, recognize that we are, the ball bouts are creating that that um interreaction that we mentioned.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I just want to point out, it is a way a lot of uh kids are biking um back and forth between um East Palo Alto and and everything. So um so then, am I, is it safe to say then that staff is comfortable with um that recommended uh modification? On Newbridge?
Yes, uh staff is is comfortable with that. Uh one clarification I would ask is if we um. So so certainly, that direction is to to um not have the permanent installation. But if we should um keep the temporary uh ball bouts out there or or do some sort of modification, uh maybe just a little bit of direction on that.
Oh, um yeah, my my recommend, I I I haven't talked about this with councilmember Taylor, but would be to take out the temporary. Cause that's it's causing a problem right now, so. Okay, um so moving on, I I'm actually gonna go to the, under the speed humps, I'm gonna go to the second um one. Cause I would just want to stay on Newbridge while we're talking about Newbridge. Um it says Newbridge Street between Chilco and Willow Road. So um again, I want to acknowledge that the Fire District's preference um is not to have speed humps. Um and I'm sensitive to that and I'm not saying to line Newbridge with speed humps. Um but there is a stretch of Newbridge um that doesn't have stop signs. Where it might be beneficial just to have kind of one speed hump there. And um my understanding was that um uh staff was going to look at that kind of two block stretch. To see if there was an opportunity with driveway um ingress and egress. If there was a placement, a potential placement for a speed hump in that location. So, uh Mr. Chen.
Uh I apologize. So this will be regarding the uh the speed humps on. Uh, I apologize. So this will be regarding the uh, the speed humps on
On New Bridge. Uh, no, on New Bridge, um, we discussed yesterday that there is a stretch. Um, I believe it's between maybe Madera and Hollyburn that doesn't have a stop sign. So sometimes cars go, so is there an opportunity in that longer stretch to place one speed hump?
Right, um, well, there's certainly an opportunity there. Um, so so if that's the the will of the council, we can certainly um, explore that as well.
Okay, okay, thanks. Okay, thank you. Um, so now I'll move on to to Chilco um, and the speed humps. So um, Chilco um, has a school, multiple schools on Chilco. And I believe a few weeks ago, council actually just voted to lower speed limits near schools to 15 miles an hour. Um, and so, and I believe unlike New Bridge that has a lot of stop signs, um, which kind of naturally slow down traffic. Um, there is some speeding concerns on Chilco. And so Councilmember Taylor and I discussed actually wanting to move forward with speed humps on Chilco. Again, recognizing this is not the Fire District's preference. Um, but again, looking at that balance and trade off um, between safe streets and emergency access. Uh, and given that it's right at the school, um, would be to direct staff to look into putting speed humps on Chilco between Terminal and New Bridge. So um, Mr. Chen, do you have any concerns other than what the Fire District has already expressed about that?
Um, no, no immediate concerns that that I I can think of. I think certainly knowing how how Chilco works between Terminal and Hamilton, being such a short segment. Um, probably not an opportunity there, but but certainly I think the opportunity on on the rest of Chilco from from Hamilton to New Bridge, uh, certainly that there are some opportunities for speed humps.
Yeah, and I think the intention would be to disturb us, to defer to staff's judgment on where it's appropriate um, to have those, and we don't need to overdo it. Um, okay, so then also on Chilco, so so um, the, as um, Councilmember Taylor and I discussed kind of the biggest kind of concerning areas along, if you look at the Bell Haven neighborhood and cut through traffic, is really at Chilco and Ivy and Chilco and New Bridge. So um, what else could we do at those intersections to um, help pedestrians, like all users kind of slow down and be more aware? And so um, Ms. Nagaya said that staff was gonna kind of look at some raised crosswalks, flashing stop signs. You know, like what bells and whistles could be at those corners? And I'm curious if you have any more information about those two particular intersections. You're on mute.
Thank you very much. So certainly, uh, just to speak to the flashing stop signs first. Um, definitely something that that staff is um, comfortable with. Um, although we want to make sure that we do the diligent outreach to to the red corner houses to make sure that they're aware of it and make sure that their concerns are properly addressed before we put them in. In terms of the raised crosswalks, that they're very much similar to the speed humps, I think. Uh, they are obviously deserve a a a, the purpose of slowing down vehicles to to go over. Um, however, it it does create some some challenges in terms of how to um, address some of the change issues that's similar to to the ones I mentioned along Ivy Drive. But those are, you know, design constraints that that if that's the will of the council, we can certainly take those directions and go back and identify, you know, the ideal location for those improvements. And and also some of the design uh, modifications that that we need to go into. Unfortunately, I can't can't give you the exact details right now, but but I think that's, there's enough information for us to go back and and explore this.
And then is it, is it correct that the city's standard for speed humps is that they have cutouts for fire truck wheels um, to mitigate some of the the access issue? But with raised crosswalks, they wouldn't have that kind of of kind of benefit?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So the raised crosswalks might be even more concerning for the Fire District than the speed humps that have the cutouts?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Um, and then finally, um, so this wasn't on the list, but again, it goes back to my question that I had earlier about the gateways. Um, I am now really concerned about the gateway, gateways serving as bulb outs, which we've kind of determined, at least I've determined. I'll have to hear from my colleagues, um, are problematic. Um, I know that in, um, I think I sent, I sent at least Ms. Nagaya a picture of some signs in Lynnfield Oaks. Um, and in the Willows that, you know, are are just on a regular pole. And it's like, welcome to this neighborhood and please drive safely. Um, so, oh, I, there there are the pictures of the gateways. Yeah, those, this could be very problematic. Um, so um, just would another option, rather than these brick gateways, be potentially some signs? And could they be put in the existing sidewalk without blocking sidewalk access? And I know this, I didn't tell you this question ahead of time, so I apologize for putting you on the spot.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely, that's okay. So so I would, I would say yes, absolutely. If if the the will of the council tonight is to uh, proceed with installing the those signs that you mentioned a- along the sidewalk, um, instead of the the um, the gateways that are being shown to you here tonight, that that's certainly a direction then.
So those are all of the uh, recommendations, changes that I wanted to go through, and I will turn it over to my colleagues. Thank you.
Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, um, and thank you, Mr. Chen, for your your patience. Um, I just wanted to to clarify with the the stop sign, it's not a flashing stop sign, it's a lighted stop sign. So when you pull up to it, it lights up as opposed to something flashing on and off. Um, you mentioned that you would do some outreach um, to residents. So the stop sign I'm thinking of, um, that was recommended by one of the um, the residents that live in the area is that when you pull up to the stop sign, it would light up around the rim as opposed to it constantly flashing.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you very much for that clarification. Um, we'll, we'll take it back uh, and and uh, explore those options, but but thank you very much for that clarification.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Nash, I don't have any additional questions.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember Mueller, do you have any questions? So I'll go ahead.
I do not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I actually had one question, and that's going back to the gateway treatments. So, um, because I was very concerned, as I think has been stated about um, that acting as a bulb out. What, so what, can you please explain to me again what the desired direction is? I don't know if this would be from Councilmember Mueller, uh, Wilson, or um, Mr. Chen? Cause my concern is that um, we do, I'm concerned if we're putting signs in the sidewalk and how that works.
Right, so um, easy one first. Hamilton, because there's a landscape strip um, separating the sidewalk and the travel line. Obviously, depending on how big the signs are, we'll have to be be careful about the placement of it. But I'm not seeing um, any any major concerns with with those signs being being um, on Hamilton. Definitely, definitely recognize the um, the some of the the limited areas along along New Bridge, uh, particularly where where we're currently proposing. Um, however, I I think there's, there's certainly opportunities out there that that we can explore. Um, if, so, so I'm not, unfortunately, I can't, I can't say yes or no to this at this moment. But but I'm not, I'm certainly not seeing anything that that refrains me from saying we cannot do yet. Um, but but definitely will be to to explore that a little bit further.
What my concern is, um, which I think, you know, is that the sidewalks there are not overly wide. And if we now put an impediment in there, that makes it that much more difficult for everyone to um, access, especially as you get greenery. Narrowing the sidewalk, so just um, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, that definitely, yeah, and that's just ways we can, um, for instance, we can explore behind a sidewalk. Sometimes there's a little bit of room there that we can look into as well. Uh, certainly when it comes to the sign, the pose a little bit skinnier, so there might be an opportunity while on narrow it down, but but still um, retain kind of that minimum ADA. Um, with clearance uh, without impeding the access for for too too long. Yes, it's kind of a skinny pole.
Perfect, thank you. And I wanted to thank you for um, just a really thorough presentation. It was um, and you're answering all the questions here. And also thank, um, I really appreciate Councilmember Taylor and Wilson with your detailed analysis of this. It's really, a lot of work has gone in on everybody's part, in addition to all the work that's gone in from the commissions and um, everyone before coming up to this point. Are there any other questions? And otherwise, does um, would you like to make a motion, either Councilmember Taylor or Wilson, please? Councilmember Taylor.
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor Nash. I I saw Ms. Nagaya come on twice, and so I I think, I think she wanted to speak.
Ms. Nagaya, thank you.
Sorry, thank you, Councilmember Taylor and Vice Mayor Nash. Um, so I just wanted to clarify, um, it, Councilmember Taylor earlier asked a question about the the stop signs and um, asked that they be kind of li- light, lighted up as a vehicle approaches. And we were just comparing notes, and I don't think that our our staff is currently aware of any locations that have stop signs like that. Typically, what what we see are uh, flashing lights in the rim of the stop sign that um, flash continuously. Um, so I I think um, uh, Senior Engineer Chen can potentially show a picture of of what um, we had found that could be um, installed at the intersections at Chilco and Ivy and Chilco and New Bridge. But I just want to make sure that we were, were clear. Um, if you have a a potential location that that you're thinking of, um, we're happy to look into it and see if we can find something that you're describing. Uh, but but as far as we can tell quickly tonight, um, I I don't know if if that exists um, as a device that we could install. Sorry to interrupt.
Councilmember Taylor, do you?
Thank you, and and thank you, Ms. Nagaya, for for sharing that information. Um, if I find an example, I'll I'll share it with you, um, but thank you for looking. I appreciate that. Um, there was one other piece I just wanted to share with the council that I plan on doing as a part of my motion. Um, and this is regarding, we have the traffic calming measures that are being implemented in this plan. Um, because there are some other safety um, concerns that I believe are addressed in our TMP. Um, I would like to um, add to my motion that we um, direct staff um, to speak with the applicant um, who is paying for this project, um, with the possibilities of adding items um, to the project to be done at the same time, but it would not be at the expense of the applicant. It would be at the expense of the city. And that was one of the reasons why I suggested earlier, if there was any um, extra from the previous item, J3 uh, that we discussed, um, that those funds potentially could be used for that. But um, at this time, the information that the city manager shared with me is that the funding, we would need to identify another funding source. Um, but I wanted to include in the motion for this that we um, direct staff to discuss with the applicant, the possibilities of adding items to be done at the same time. If the council agrees. So I would put that in the motion.
Ms. Nagaya or um, City Manager Jerome Robinson, could you, do you want to comment?
Well, uh, I I guess my first comment would be a question, and that is exactly, uh, can we be more precise about which ads we're talking about?
There were some of items that was, that were put into a, the mid pen application with the state. Um, mid pen did not get that grant, and they were um, safety improvements along Willow and Ivy. Um, and there are a few other items that I believe are on the TMP. Um, but I just wanted, if if there's a project going and there's a possibility to add something um, to it, that we use this opportunity um, to save some time.
Well, okay, thank you for for sharing that. I I would have to go back and look um, to be more confident about um, what's achievable. I would say this, but my recollection is that those were very expensive improvements. So we can definitely reach out to Facebook and talk to them about it, happy to do that, um, and then come back to the council. And and I guess just do a quick review of the TMP and identify projects that would be in the area and and go back to the mid pen.
Yes, please, and thank you.
Thank you. With that, um, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash, and the answer is yes, and Ms. Heron, thank you for coming out. Um, I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution sixty six, 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 three to approve the permanent installation of the Bell Haven Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan with the amendments that were shared. And Ms. Heron?
I do have those uh, written down. So um, I do have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Taylor to adopt Resolution six, 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 three to approve permanent installation of the Bell Haven Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan and direct staff to examine the no permanent installation of bulb outs on New Bridge and the removal of the temporaries, and install one speed bump on New Bridge. Install speed humps on Chilco Street between Terminal Avenue and New Bridge Street. And install raised crosswalks and flashing stop signs at Chilco Street and Ivy Drive and Chilco Street and New Bridge Street. And replace brick gateways with signage on the sidewalk. And direct staff to discuss with the applicant, other projects to run simultaneously if possible.
Councilmember Wilson.
Um, I uh, just wanted to ask Councilmember Taylor in her motion. Um, given the impact of the raised sidewalks on the Fire District, if um, we could see if it, just give staff discretion on the best ways to calm at those intersections with the least amount of impact, given the speed humps that are going in and not wanting to impede their access further?
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, then I'm happy to uh, second the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, City Councilmember Wilson.
Councilmember Mueller, please, excuse me.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen speed humps that have cutouts in the center so that fire access vehicles can can drive through the center of the speed hump. There's a locate throughout various areas and uh, frankly, near my home. I'm wondering if the both of you are open to staff exploring modifications to the speed humps such that the fire truck could go ahead and get through them, not without having to deal with the humps such as cutouts?
Councilmember Wilson.
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilmember Mueller, and tho- those were already um, in the uh, recommendations to have the cutouts.
Thank you.
Seeing no further city council question or discussions. By roll call vote, City Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
City Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash?
Yes.
And the motion passes with Mayor Combs recused. Thank you.
Thank you, and um, Mayor Combs has requested that we have a dinner break now, and I think that's a great idea. Um, City Kirk Heron, could you lead us through that, please?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Nash. So at this time, we'll ask that the city council disengage your webcams and microphones. Um, we will break for, I believe it's a 25 minute dinner period, is that? And if we can go 30 minutes? Um, so we'll return in 30 minutes, so at eight thirty. Um, and when you do return, only engage your webcam. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks.
Welcome back, Mayor Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. Having all returned to our virtual base, Mayor Combs, you may reconvene.
Great, thank you, City Clerk Karen. So heads up, we're going to be jumping around on the agenda just a little bit to make sure we get to everything or prioritize the things that there is a time element to. So we'll go to L four next, adopt a resolution amending the City Council approved salary schedule effective September 21st, 2021. I'm here to present the items Assistant City Manager Nick Pagaras.
Thank you, Mayor Combs, and good evening, City Council, Nick Pagaras, Assistant City Manager. I do not have a formal presentation this evening, however, I am available for questions should you have any regarding the requested action. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pagaras. City Clerk Karen, can we call for public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item L four, adopt a resolution amending the City Council approved salary schedule effective September 21st, 2021, adding four positions to the salary schedule, finance director, enterprise applications administrator, systems administrator, and engineering service manager, and removing one position from the salary schedule, engineering service manager, city engineer. Any further City Council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, City Council Member Mueller.
Yes.
City Council Member Taylor.
Yes.
City Council Member Willison.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Right, thank you, City Clerk Karen. With that, we'll continue in regular business and go to L five, direct direction on drafting ordinance and ballot measure for City Council consideration on preserving parkland. But before, and Councilmember Mueller will introduce the item, but before he does, I just want to make one correction. In the staff report, this was presented as being, this proposal was presented as being from both Councilmember Mueller and myself. This is only from Councilmember Mueller. I supported bringing it to council and putting it on the agenda in my role as mayor, but this has always been Councilmember Mueller's proposal. So just with that clarification, I will turn to Councilmember Mueller to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I'm going to ask to share screen at this moment.
City Council Member Mueller should be good to go.
Can you see my screen?
Yes, thank you.
Great. And so basically, a little background on this, this isn't the first time that the park reservation issues come up in City Menlo Park during our housing element back in 2012. This issue was raised, and at the time, the city attorney issued an opinion setting forth the law on this issue, and it's pretty clear cut, the government code sets forth in sections three, eight, four, four zero, three, eight, four, six, two, that basically, the city can only dispose of land that's been designated as a dedicated park by through a couple of means. Either it has to do so through a vote of the public, or it can do so with an exception that if there's a minor piece of the park that's contiguous, there's a minor piece of the park can be conveyed away, if there's a minor, if there's a portion of park contiguous to it of equal size, and those are, that's, that's set forth in three, eight, four, four zero, two, three, eight, four, eight, three, eight, four, six, two. There's a second procedure, and this is really the procedure that gives rise to the cause for this ordinance today, and that's under California Governance Code, section three, seven, one, one point one. And basically what that is, it's the other municipal purpose exception. And what that allows the city to do is convey away parkland if it's acquired parkland somewhere else in the city, and it's using that parkland, actually not conveyed away, but it can change the use of that parkland, excuse me, to something other than park, if it's acquired parkland somewhere else in the city, and that, that use of the land is for another municipal use. And so what the city attorney at that time was that if this is so, for example, the reason why this exception is concerning is because if the city acquired parkland in some other part of the city, and then determined that it was going to go ahead and take portions of a park in a different place and use that for a municipal purpose, the city owning the land, potentially having someone else manage that, whatever was developed on that land, that could be an exception to a public vote. And so with that background of understanding the law in this area. Go ahead and see. Trying to get this to move forward. On August 4th, 2021, what raised concern about it was Chair Grove in the Housing, in the Housing Commission meeting identified Sharon Park for consideration for development in the current housing element. And in that meeting, she called on the City Council to plan a commission to consider this proposal, actually asked us to consider that. What resulted was that the Sharon Heights homeowners association called a meeting on August 30th and invited me to the meeting. Now, at that meeting, the prior city attorney opinion was raised, and the concern was expressed that the city may pursue using one of the exceptions in the government code to move forward developing the city parks. And so there's, and then there was a third thing as well that I didn't discuss was also which parks in the city were actually dedicated or not that the government code would apply to. As a result, so we had that discussion, residents also shared the concern that Sharon Heights has many residents living in various types of multifamily housing who use Sharon Park, and the need will only increase as density continues to increase. It's important to note, the park is essentially three miles from Burgess Park, the same distance, for example, as Kelly Park. So asking students to actually get on a bike and go all the way to Burgess actually is quite, quite challenging. Something else that's a misconception that a lot of people don't realize is that District Five actually has quite a fair number of multifamily housing units that, that really are dependent upon park space for recreation. At the time of redistricting, District Five had the third most multifamily units in the city by percentage, and I'm not sure people actually are aware of that, but as the city increases density over time, we really are going to need that.
Welcome back, Mayor Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. Having all returned to our virtual base, Mayor Combs, you may reconvene.
Great, thank you, City Clerk Karen. So heads up, we're going to be jumping around on the agenda just a little bit to make sure we get to everything or prioritize the things that that there is a time element to. So we'll go to L four next, adopt a resolution amending the City Council approved salary schedule effective September twenty first, twenty twenty one, here to present the items Assistant City Manager Nick Pagaras.
Thank you, Mayor Combs, and good evening, City Council, Nick Pagaras Assistant City Manager. I do not have a formal presentation this evening, however, I am available for questions should you have any regarding the requested action. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pagaras, City Clerk Karen, can we call for public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item L four, adopt a resolution amending the City Council approved salary schedule effective September twenty first, twenty twenty one, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a landliner cellphone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on item L four. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Combs may continue.
All right, thank you, City Clerk Karen. So bringing it back to the dais, are there any questions for Mr. Pagaras on this urgent item? Is there a motion? If there are no questions? Councilmember Wilson?
I'll move, I'll so move the resolution.
Adoption of the resolution. Right, I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Wilson and a second by Mayor Combs to adopt resolution number six, 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 nine, amending the City Council's salary schedule effective September twenty first, twenty twenty one, adding four positions to the salary schedule, Finance Director, Enterprise Applications Administrator, Systems Administrator and Engineering Service Manager, and removing one position from the salary schedule, Engineering Service Manager, City Engineer. Any further City Council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
City Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash?
Yes.
Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Right, thank you, City Clerk Karen. With that, we'll continue in regular business and go to L five direct, uh, direction on drafting ordinance and ballot measure for City Council consideration on preserving parkland. But before, and uh, Councilmember Mueller will introduce the item. But before he does, I just want to make one correction. In the staff report, this was presented as being, this proposal was presented as being from both Councilmember Mueller and myself. This is only from Councilmember Mueller. I supported bringing it to council and putting on the agenda in my role as as mayor. But but this has always been, uh, Councilmember Mueller's proposal. So just with that clarification, I will turn to Councilmember Mueller to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I'm going to ask to share screen at this moment.
City Councilmember Mueller should be good to go.
Can you see my screen?
He, yes, thank you.
Great. And so basically, a little background on this, this isn't the first time that the park reservation issues come up in City Menlo Park during our housing element back in two thousand twelve. Uh, this issue was raised and at the time, the city attorney reached, had issued an opinion setting forth the law on this issue, and it's pretty clear cut, the government code sets forth in sections three, eight, four, four, zero, three, eight, four, six, two. That basically, the city can only dispose of land that's been designated as a dedicated park uh, by through a couple of meetings. Either it has to do so through a vote of the public or it can do so with an exception that if there's a minor piece of the park that's contiguous, uh, there's a minor piece of the park can be conveyed away if there's a minor, if there's a portion of park contiguous to it of equal size. And those are, uh, that's, that's set forth in three, eight, four, four, zero, two, three, eight, four, eight, three, eight, four, six, two. There's a second procedure, and this is really the procedure that gives rise to the cause for this ordinance today. And that's under California Governance Code, section three, seven, one, one point one. And basically what that is, it's the other municipal purpose exception. And what that allows the city to do is convey away parkland if it's acquired parkland uh, somewhere else in the city and it's using that parkland, actually not conveyed away, but it can change the the use of that parkland, excuse me, to something other than park. If it's acquired parkland somewhere else in the city and that that use of the land is for another municipal use. And so what the city attorney at that time was that, uh, if this is so, for example, the reason why this exception is is concerning is because if the city acquired parkland in some other part of the city and then determined that it was going to go ahead and take portions of a park in a different place and use that for a municipal purpose of the city owning the land, potentially having someone else manage that whatever was developed on that land, that could be an exception to a public vote. And so, uh, with that background of understanding the law in this area. Go ahead and see. Trying to get this to move forward. On August fourth, uh, twenty twenty one, what what raised concern about it was Chair Grove in the housing, uh, in the, in the Housing Commission meeting identified Sharon Park for consideration for development, our current housing element. And in that meeting, uh, she called on the City Council, a planning commission to consider this proposal. Actually asked us to consider that. What resulted was that the Sharon Heights homeowners association called a meeting on August thirtieth and invited me to the meeting. Now, at that meeting, uh, the prior city attorney opinion was raised. And the concern was expressed that the city may pursue using one of the exceptions in the government code to move forward developing in city parks. And so, um, there's, and then there was a third thing as well that I didn't discuss was also which parks in the city were actually dedicated or not that the government code would apply to. As a result, uh, so we had that discussion, residents also shared the concern that Sharon Heights has many residents living in various types of multifamily housing who use Sharon Park. And the need will only increase as density continues to increase. It's important to note, the park is essentially three miles from Burgess Park, the same distance, for example, as Kelly Park. So asking students to actually get on a bike and go all the way to Burgess actually is quite, uh, quite challenging. Something else that's a misconception that a lot of people don't realize is that District Five actually has quite a fair number of multifamily housing units that, uh, that really are dependent upon park space, uh, for recreation. At the time of redistricting, District Five had the third most multifamily units in the city by percentage. Uh, and I'm not sure people actually are aware of that, but as the city increases density over time, we really are going to need that park space. And what really came up in that meeting as well is that candidly, we're going to need park space throughout the city. As we densify that park space, uh, to cannibalize that park space makes it more and more scarce. And the families that move into our city actually are going to rely on that park space. Those families are going to need places to go out and to recreate. And we saw that through COVID nineteen, how important it was for people's mental health to actually be able to get out and get into those parks. So the, the, the type of housing that we're going to be adding to our city from this place, from really from this point forward is going to be dense and multifamily housing and people who live there need their parks. So taking away parks of parkland is just, it's not advisable. At that meeting, candidly, residents ready to move forward on their own and start working on a ballot measure immediately. And I asked them to please allow me to first take this issue to the council before residents pursue a ballot measure on their own. I thought I could bring it to you all and talk to you about it and see if I could go ahead and and get an ordinance passed on this issue and a follow on ballot measure to close those loopholes. Uh, in response to Chair Grove's call for consideration, and she asked us to consider this, and in light of the resident feedback on August thirty first, uh, and in light of resident feedback on August thirty first, I emailed the mayor requesting this issue be agendized. And the intent of the item before you tonight is really just to close those exceptions in the government code and to always require a public vote uh, without any exception when proposing the conversion of parkland for a nonpark and uh, for a nonpark and recreation use in the city of Menlo Park. I mean, basically, uh, we want there to always be a vote if you're going to go, because that parkland is so important to to the density that we're going to be adding, uh, moving forward. We don't think that that's something that should be left. And candidly, we, it's not something having gone through this now twice, it's not something that we want to have to go through a third time in a short order. And so what we're asking you all to do is, and I'm not asking it, obviously, say you'll do it tonight because it's the first time you're seeing the language, but basically to ask the city attorney to draft an ordinance, a park preservation ordinance for consideration for this council at a later meeting. First off, identifying all dedicated parks in Menlo Park. Let's get it written down, where are all of our dedicated parks and clarify that. Second, requiring a majority vote of the public, should the city suit seek to use parkland for other municipal purposes not related to park and recreation uses under California Government Code, section three, seven, one, one point one. And again, and it actually, I, we've left it, I've left in here that if the city wants to do a park and recreation use, fine. But if it's not a park and recreation use, a public vote. The third point that we're asking the ordinance to do is requiring a majority vote of the public, should the city seek to convey a minor portion of parkland in exchange for parkland located contiguous to the current park pursuant to California Government Code, three, eight, four, one, one. Again, just closing that loophole. The next thing that we were to ask is a follow on, uh, a follow on a ballot measure, and this is really, uh, what the residents uh, were seeking to begin with. And the reason for the follow up ballot, the, the follow up ballot measure would basically include all the elements requiring a majority public vote included in the park and preservation ordinance. And the reason for it is because if adopted, the park preservation ballot measure would preclude the City Council and future City Councils from rescinding the ordinance at a later date. Rather, a vote of the public would be required to rescind the park protection set forth in the measure. And that's simply, that's simply a protection for a council who's under pressure not to just say, well, we're getting rid of the ordinance so we can do this without a public vote. It's basically this council saying, we understand that parks are this important that we should not be, uh, that there should not be threats to our city's parks, especially as we continue to densify the city. And that those families moving into those, into the city need these parks. Uh, since mailing, emailing the mayor over the last two weeks, concerned residents have gathered close to seventeen hundred signatures from residents all over Menlo Park and neighboring communities on a change dot petition. They've also canvassed neighborhoods and worked farmers market. The overwhelming response key has been that we must not develop in city parks. Additionally, the nonprofit group Green foothills sent a letter supporting that development not occur in our city parks. Still, and just four days ago, on September seventeenth, Chair Grove was published in the Almanac editorial that just went online today advocating that Sharon Park be considered for housing in the city's housing element. Now, in a positive development for residents advocating against developing in city parks, today Chair Grove emailed the City Council that she knows dropped the issue concerning housing in city parks. We also received emails from the Green Belt Alliance that Ms. Grove has CC'd on and also from the nonprofit advocacy group Menlo Together that have indicated that as development parks is now a non-issue, the city should not spend time passing in ordinance pursuing a balanced measure. Chair Grove states now that our parks are protected. That's great, and I understand everything's been well intentioned here. Like, I'm not, I'm not questioning intention. But respectfully, the residents who I've worked with on this issue and I believe our city parks are not adequately protected. And just because Ms. Grove has changed her mind, that doesn't provide protection to our city parks. This council or any other party could attempt to seek to exercise the government's exceptions at any time in the future. Uh, and so we really need to go ahead and move forward with this to go ahead and provide that level of protection to our, to our city parks and also message to our city, our city residents how much, how much we're, we actually value, uh, their input in protecting them. We're requesting the City Council instruct the city attorney to draft a consideration at a future meeting, this park protection ordinance, as I've already laid out, and to draft, uh, uh, an accompanying parks preservation ballot measure to be put on the next Sammentail County election ballot. We wouldn't want, it's not, doesn't have to go on a special election ballot. We can just wait till the next one comes along and put it on there so that the city, uh, city residents could go ahead and at that time uh, a vote to adopt it, which I think, can, based on the input we're getting, I think would be overwhelmingly adopted. So with that, I, I thank you for your consideration on the item. We did receive some emails saying that they did not want the, the measure to be drafted over broad or the ordinance to be drafted over broad. Candidly, City Council action on this item, instructing the city attorney to actually draft this ordinance and to draft the measure, I think will ensure that this measure isn't drafted over broad. If the council does not, does not wish to proceed with this at this time, I can tell you, I have spoken to residents who are, who worked on organizing this effort, and I do believe they are going to continue to push for these protections. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller, uh, City Clerk Karen, let's call for public comment. So, so there has been, uh, before we go officially to public comment, a lot of, uh, interest in this, this item, and, and obviously, we received a lot of emails and other communications on, on this item. So given that, I'm going to limit public comment to each individual public comment to, to one minute. And I would only say, like, if you've heard your, your opinion or stance, uh, if, if you've heard it from another speaker, uh, maybe, uh, yeah, think about not commenting, um, in, in a sense that then, then, uh, that would, uh, bring this back to, to the dais, the virtual dais, uh, more quickly so that, that we can get to, to, to council discussion. Of course, uh, public engagement and public comment is incredibly important. But, but, um, but I, I can't say we, we have heard and do understand that there's lots of public interest um, in, in this matter, and I have no doubt that my colleagues have read. Um, at least some of them have, have read every single, uh, email that, that, that was, that was received. And so, so, uh, so, so you can, you have no doubt that, that you, you have been heard. Okay, with that, um, I will go to City Clerk Karen to call for, for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to comment on item L five, direction on drafting an ordinance and ballot measure for City Council consideration on preserving park land, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a landliner or cellphone, please press star nine now. And our first speaker will be Seamless Bay Area. You can please state your name for the record.
Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident, Complete Streets Commission, speaking for myself, and I really did try to double log out, but it didn't work. Um, I am, uh, speaking to the letter from Menlo Together. And, um, the core of this letter is about the context here, which is the housing element. Um, this, the city is facing an increasingly strict state to zone for sufficient housing, including very low income housing. If we have to do all the low income housing on the city budget without using any public land, the city could be on the hook for sixty to a hundred million dollars. And so there's an important need in the housing element to look for places to cite very low income housing. That said, it seems not possible for the city to use land zoned for parks as housing. In the state law, the city would need to rezone the site and the city would need to provide substantial evidence that the, that the existing use would likely be discontinued during the planning period. And, um, if that is looking implausible, then HCD would likely not accept the housing element, and there are several housing element applications that, um, have been rejected this year. They are much more strict. Therefore, um, it's not even feasible to have a parkland i- in the housing element. Therefore, since this is extraordinarily unlikely, we think that the city's attention and staff and resources should go into incorporating park and open space needs into the housing element and focusing our resources on community conversations about where to have the deeply affordable housing, including on publicly owned land such as parking lots and in conjunction with the environmental justice and safety elements that include things like equitable access to public amenities such as parks.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Catherine Carlton.
Hi, um, thank you guys so much for what you do. I know firsthand, it's a tough job. Thank you. As previous councils made it more difficult for people to have their own grass lawns, our parklands become even more important. Important for residents' happiness as well as their health, parkland is sacred. This is why I asked the city attorney to confirm his opinion before I left office. And I wanted the, them to pass a city ordinance to protect our parks years ago, but was told by the city attorney and the city manager at the time that it wasn't necessary, that it was a waste of staff time to go through the process of protecting our parks as they were not in danger. I believe our parks are in danger. I firmly believe that you should please pass an ordinance to protect our parks from being taken from the residents who developed. I support Ray Mueller's suggestions to protect our parks forever. Please, for the residents and their future generations and children, protect our parks. We're trusting you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Jeff Fenton.
Uh, hello, this is Jeff Fenton. I'm a Menlo Park resident on Sherman Avenue. Uh, thank you to Councilmember Muller and of the City Council for considering this issue. Uh, it is critical to preserve our parks as a resource for mental as well as physical health. As the city's population increases, the need for parks and recreation will only increase as well. Parks also help mitigate the heat island effect from climate change. As some of our other speakers have noted, there are other more workable solutions to address housing needs at suitable sites throughout the city while preserving our parks as an endowment for future generations as well as our current needs. I urge you to adopt this proposed ordinance, and I thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Mihal Bortnik.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, I just, uh, first want to say I uh, wholeheartedly agree about the importance of parks for mental wellbeing. Mine and everybody else's, uh, big reason why I wanted to move to Menlo Park, uh, in the first place. And so why would, and you, like, is, I, I don't know that anybody's against parks and, uh, why would even consider this, uh, ordinance, uh, or not doing this ordinance? And what I wanted to ask about is, uh, what impact does it have on equity? You know, Menlo Park geography has been shaped by its history and a lot of it has been discriminatory, and I would assume that parks and distribution of parks, uh, is a part of it. And I would love to, uh, that to be reflected in discussion and in the ordinance.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is David Yoshida.
Thank you. Uh, my name is David Yoshida. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Um, I'm, um, a resident of Sharon Heights since nineteen seventy five. A long time resident of the area, and I listened to, uh, Councilmember Roy Mueller's presentation of L five. And I want to let you know that I wholly support the measure and hope the council will agree with the measure. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Jay Wender.
Hello, good evening. This is Jaclyn Wender. I'm a resident in, uh, Menlo Park. I wanted to strongly support Councilmember Mueller's proposal. In his original email to the council accompanying the agenda, he noted that many people are in favor of upzoning Sharon Heights Shopping Center for a multi-use development, including low affordable housing. I'm strongly supportive of that as well. I think that it's critical that we preserve all our parklands now because no matter how much you may, as individuals, support our parks now, we have no protection against city councils in the future. And so Councilmember Mueller's proposal is a common sense way of bringing to the people of Menlo Park the ability to preserve our parklands now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Michael Babiac.
Hi, good evening. Um, I live near the park on Carter Way, and my family and I frequent, are frequent users of the park. It really is a treasure that is, that is shared not only with our neighbors in the immediate vicinity, but with residents from all over the city. And it seems to always be busy, especially on weekends, when it's a delight to, to see it full of young families, of wedding parties and, and older people like me enjoying the beautiful landscape. Uh, I, I want to say that I, you know, wholeheartedly support Councilman Mueller's initiative to ensure that the city preserves this park and, and all the parks in Menlo Park for junior generations, for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Maya Seawald.
Hi, councilmembers. Thank you, as we all have said, for your dedication to our beautiful city. I couldn't agree more with Ray Mueller's, uh, plan, uh, idea about this, uh, ordinance, because I feel like this is just going to happen over and over again. I think, um, particularly in this instance, it seems like we've lost a lot of institutional memory. So this happened years ago with, uh, in particular Sharon Park. I don't want it to continue to happen another eight or nine years from now where we're back up against the same problem, which is why I'm so strongly in favor of Ray's proposed ordinance. And that is true for all of our beautiful parks in Menlo Park. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Brittany Baxter.
Hi, Brittany Baxter, resident of Menlo Park. Um, I'm really glad to see this discussion about housing. It's super important. Um, I wanted to provide a little bit of context from my understanding about the housing element and why this particular site, this little corner of the park, um, did come up in twenty twelve and this time around. So we do have a really high Reno goal to meet, and part of that is, um, we need to be citing affordable housing in places where it's realistic to build. And my understanding is that's why public land has come up for discussion, um, kind of throughout the different districts that we have here. So really excited to see all this momentum, would definitely encourage people to participate in the housing element discussions that are coming up and ongoing. Um, we also need to think really hard about how to identify a site for affordable housing in District Five. Um, so Safeway, I think, is a great location, but we think, we would need to work with the developer of that parcel to make sure that they're open to redeveloping it. So I would love to see some of that energy directed there. Thanks so much. So I would love to see some of that energy directed there. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your comment. And then I did have a hand up by Shanda Bales. So Shanda, if you did want to provide comment, please do re-raise your hand. I will be going to our next commenter. The name is coming up as eminent domain. If you can please state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is eminent domain. I'm here to say that we should eat the rich. The fat cat landlords have had it way too good in this town for way too long. The town is called Menlo Park. I feel like we should keep the parks. If you're looking for low income housing, I know a ton of properties in downtown Menlo Park that were built in the nineteen fifties and yet have rents that are sky high. You have to question, what are the structural problems that are leading to this housing shortage? And the structural problem is the fact that we store wealth in property and that's never going to change. And you and everyone on this call knows that we're not going to solve this housing crisis without heavy-handed government intervention that's going to change the structural nature of the way property is valued in Menlo Park. The only way we can do that is eminent domain, large sections of downtown, repurpose them as the city sees fit. And to do so, we can take advantage of the extremely low interest rates, which are pretty much the lowest they've been in hundreds of years. Because of the current pandemic. I see no reason why we can't do this and I see, it's quite ironic to me that we are entertaining a proposal by some people to take public land and make it private. I'll let my comments there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Shanda Behaus.
Okay, am I unmuted?
Yes, thank you.
Great, hi, Shonda Ballas. Thank you, City Council, for providing this open forum. I really appreciate it. I'm a longtime resident of Menlo Park. I want to say nineteen seventy-seven. The parks, I think, I won't repeat what other people have said. I'm very much in agreement with the higher density, which I believe we need to have and we need to have low, lower income housing, but higher density means that people won't have backyards. And the parkland is so important. I will put in one other bid for, which I haven't heard mentioned, which is for wildlife. We have had, we have seen bald eagles, we have had nesting red shoulder hawks in some of these parks over the last couple of years. Some avid photographers out there every day can tell you that they have been returning, especially with the pandemic. And I just think it would be, we'd be stealing from our children if we eliminate the parks in a short sighted move instead of moving to develop or redevelop upzone existing residential properties. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Robert Dickinson.
Okay, unmuted.
Yes, thank you.
My wife Sylvia and I have, are relative newcomers. We've only lived in Menlo Park since nineteen eighty-three. I want to mention one thing that I don't know if the Housing Commission, the council have considered or not. But if we build anything like three thousand or thirty-eight hundred new housing units, basic economics says the housing prices are going to be under considerable pressure, which will help with affordability, obviously. This proposal to convert parks to housing though has come up in the last two housing element cycles. And it's time to put it to bed once and for all. We need to ensure that parkland can't be converted to any other use without approval of the voters. And I urge you to approve Councilmember Mueller's motion.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Kelsey Baines.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kelsey Baines. I'm with Peninsula for everyone. We support parks. We also support Menlo Park fulfilling its state mandate to affirmatively further fair housing in the upcoming housing element. And the task of desegregating Menlo Park will require leadership and will not require mob rule. Leading in this case would be encouraging residents to get involved in the housing element process and ensuring them that state law would stop housing on our parkland. But a proposal that engages in fear mongering and self-promotion to an ultimate end of just wasting taxpayer money and staff time to protect parks that are already protected frankly hearkens back to Article thirty-four, which I hope many of you know is a part of our California constitution that requires public housing proposals to go to the voters. And I think this would yield similar outcomes and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Wayne Mitchellson.
Yeah, hi, thank you. I agree with and support Councilmember Mueller's proposition. Our parks have never seen more use than they have recently. But there's a never-ending and increasing pressure to chip away at our open spaces. Once they're gone, however, they're gone forever. So we need to preserve our parks and open space for the future of all residents. I also think that city council members do face individual pressure to rezone these spaces. So this proposal will help alleviate that intimidating tactics when they're imposed by others. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Ken Chan.
Hello, members of this Menlo Park City Council. My name is Ken Chan. I'm an organizer with the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We work with our leaders and their communities to produce and deserve properly affordable homes throughout San Mateo County. As you already know, HLC submitted a letter regarding this item yesterday. However, in the last twenty-four hours, it's been made clear by both members of this council and the Menlo Park County Commission that our city parks are not a viable option for the placement of homes and are thus in no real danger of being developed. I'm here to urge this council to instead refocus its efforts on the housing elements update to both consider publicly owned sites like parking lots in downtown and to also ensure that it's an inclusive public process so that all of our community members can have a say in the direction that they want to see their city move in. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Liz Bradley.
Hi, this is actually Brian Kissel, Liz's husband. My, my comments are on the website. I submitted a comment, but I'll read a portion of it. What happened to it?
Just to kind of reinforce some of the points I've heard from others. First of all, I don't agree that this is a settled matter. As Councilman Ray Mueller and others have indicated, this has come up multiple times. So it's not a settled issue and it really needs the city council's action to protect our parks. Some, some comments from kind of from a data perspective for the city master plan update on October fifteenth of twenty nineteen. There are only fifty-four acres of parkland in Menlo Park relative to a total of sixty-four hundred acres, so less than one percent. In fact, point eight percent of our total acreage. Further, the master plan discusses the need for new expanded renovated parks, open spaces and facilities, improving and maintaining existing assets and acquiring and obtaining access to additional properties for future park and recreation uses. That's a quote from the planning city planning master plan. Also, to from a fact-based perspective, Menlo Park is already very dense with eighteen hundred residents per square mile compared to San Mateo at only nine hundred ninety-eight. We have the highest percentage of children under fourteen at twenty-two percent, which is higher than the county at fifteen percent and the state at twenty. We also have a higher percentage of high-density multifamily housing at thirty-five percent than the county at thirty-three percent and the state at thirty-one percent. And as Council Mueller and others have said, with the state mandate for more housing, the density in Menlo Park is only going to increase. But this increased density, the need for parkland and open space becomes even more important for our community, especially for those living in high-density housing with limited yard and open space. There are some other comments if you want to read them from my, my post, but it has to do with, if you read the the general plan, it talks about aspirations for the community we want to have and the importance of our our park spaces. So with, with increased density and a very limited supply, the notion of taking away public parklands now or ever for any use other than park seems completely counter to our objectives as a community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for public comment on item L five related to park preservation usage. And our final public speaker will be Tim Johnston. Sorry about that, Tim.
Okay, thanks, everybody. My name is Tim Johnston, not related to John Johnston from earlier. I'm speaking to you as the president of the Menlo Park Historical Association. We are a hundred percent behind Ray's proposal on any number of fronts. But one I think is not really being addressed, not being considered is that most of our parks in this town have names attached to them. And behind those names are stories of people who have made significant contributions to the community. And as a preservationist and president of the historical association, we feel that those legacies and those stories need to be maintained. Several of those parks have storyboards in them already, Carl Clark being one. So we are a hundred percent behind it and look forward to supporting Ray in any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Looks like we had one more hand raised. Katie Beruzzi.
Hi, Katie Beruzzi, Complete Streets Commissioner, speaking for myself. And I feel like I'm hearing two different conversations happening here about two totally, it's kind of wild. There's a whole group of people who've obviously grappled with the fact that we have a housing element and that there's an unholy amount of ultra-affordable housing that we somehow need to figure out how to put into our city and zone for. And that we're going to be held accountable for that. And there's a whole other group of people that are responding to this moral panic about Karen Grove said something in a meeting and that means we're getting rid of our parks. So I had no idea Karen had that kind of power. I thought you guys were the ones who voted on things like this. So I hope that, I hope you do vote to keep our parks and preserve them. But I also hope that, that our city staff and council will get real with everybody about our awesome and intense obligations ahead of us and invite people into that conversation because I think the parks thing is a red herring. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no further hands raised. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, Councilmember Mueller.
So just to follow up a couple of things. One, I don't believe it is a red herring. So in the House Leadership Council's comments actually are striking to me because just yesterday they sent a letter saying that they encouraged us to have an inclusive process to create the ordinance and ballot measure and that parks were important. So I understand there's been a chain, and just up until today, we're, we, today was the first time we heard Ms. Grove say there was no need for this. And she is the Chair of the Housing Commission and she did invite us into this dialogue in her comments at the Housing Commission. If you listen to those comments, it said she wanted us to talk about these things. So it's not a red herring for us to talk about them. And it's not a red herring for the community to respond to them. She sits as Chair of the Housing Commission in the housing element process. But regardless of that, I did want to go ahead and talk about the fact that we actually, I actually have had discussions with my, with residents in District Five and within the petition that seventeen hundred people have signed, it indicates that the community supports upzoning in Sharon Heights Shopping Center. That it sees, and that discussion actually took place the night of, the night we had the meeting in Sharon Heights as well. It's a continuing theme. And the community has said that they will go and say to the developers who own that shopping center that they want the upzoning, that the shopping center is tired, it needs to, it actually could benefit from this. And people agreement, there could, there should be housing on top of that shopping center and this is a huge opportunity. So there is coalescing around where housing can take place. And candidly, this, while it's, it's unfortunate that this discussion took place around parks, they didn't, the community didn't start it, they responded to it, but they have coalesced around where housing should be. There also is support to look at upzoning other places, housing in other places in District Five. So, you know, I, you know, I understand there's a housing element taking place. The community is responsive to that. It was in every, it was actually cited in, in every, in every petition. People have talked about it at length in, in, in support of that. So I just wanted to cover, cover that point. But I do think it's incumbent for the council, because this continually happened and because there is, there, and again, we didn't start this conversation. It was started for us and the community has responded. The council to put this issue to bed. This is not something that we need to continue to revisit over and over again. And I think it's a strong message and a commitment to future families who will be moving in in that housing element that we will provide parks for them, that in future councils will not be able to cannibalize those parks without a vote of the public as that pressure comes down on them. But there will be parks for every family to enjoy in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. So I think my first question would be to City Attorney Doherty. There is some discussion about what council action, you know, does, and I'm certainly not asking you to wade into the politics of the issue, but you know, what does action here really do? What does it, does it protect the parks to a, in an additional degree and, or is that degree, or is it sort of nominal?
I, I think the answer in large part depends on how the parks in Menlo Park were originally dedicated. And there are different standards for private dedications and public dedications. And a private dedication is when a member of the public, a private person or entity conveys land to the city. And a public dedication is when the city acquires parkland and fee. So dedications by private persons and entities are construed really strictly according to the terms of the grant. So if the, if the dedication from a private person to the city says the use of the land shall be for park purposes only, it's really unlikely that the city could use the parkland for any other public purpose. Dedications by the city, on the other hand, where the city had originally purchased the property are construed less strictly. And there have been cases, though they're fairly antiquated, that interpret similar uses to the original dedication fairly broadly. So some examples include and these are examples that have been found consistent with park purposes, parking structures, museums, zoos, botanical gardens, libraries and even hotels and restaurants. I don't know whether housing would be construed as a similar public purpose, but I suppose there's the possibility. And so as Councilmember Mueller mentioned earlier, an ordinance could close loopholes and any vacancies in the law, such as the ones that I just mentioned.
Great, thanks. Are, are there any other, other questions? Comments? I guess I'm sort of happy to kick it. I don't sort of want, I don't have any additional questions. So I'll turn to, to just sort of some of my initial comments here. I do think someone has brought up, you know, really important point in that this is this is really challenging and how we will look to getting housing at a variety of different income levels. And especially some of the lower levels and we don't see those represented as much in some of the residential projects that we have approved and so, and they're they're required as part of the housing element to produce them. And I think, you know, we could all say that there is also a a moral obligation for a community to, to for a community to to produce them. And so I think that 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 is you know, really important to state. Menlo Park, unlike a lot of other communities, or at least some other communities, doesn't have lots of excess land that it owns. And so essentially there are things like the parks, there's the corporate yard, right? And there there are the the downtown parking lots and 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 I know that is something that has been mentioned a number of times and in that will honestly be itself a really challenging ordeal. There's, there's lots of history there, there's some, I think, to City Attorney Doherty's point about sort of going back to the history of how land was acquired. A lot of that complication exists with with the parking lots downtown also. And so it's not as if there, I think, as easy a a an outlet or solution as as some people have mentioned. And so I do think it's a really it's a really challenging issue for for the community, especially given the cost of land acquisition. The city doesn't necessarily have the where the financial wherewithal to 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 acquire land. And so how we are going to solve this problem is 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 something that really I struggle with. And then I don't, as I sit here, I don't, I don't have an answer. With regards to the matter before us, I am, I think, and I'm, and I do want to sort of share. You know, it seems that recently the council has been in this position of of sort of responding to actions or or statements by commissioners that really sort of result in the public being incredibly excited, our camps being formed really quickly. And so then we have to kind of play catch up in in responding to that instead of looking at the holistic issue. And so, so we don't look at, and I'm going to just fill my soapbox for a minute. We don't actually have to, we don't look at like how Menlo Park gets more residents to transition from gas powered water heaters to to other options. What we have is a an ordinance that would prevent people from buying into them, that becomes the issue. And so and so here I actually talked to Chair Grove, and I appreciate her dedication to the city. And and I was supportive of, you know, holistic study session, looking at public lands, knowing that that wasn't going to be an easy conversation to have and was likely not to provide a a resolution. But you know, now we're not looking at, you know, holistically, we're just responding to this, this one thing. And so, and so I do think it is, it is, it is really challenging to keep getting into that situation where we are, we are, again, like I say, just sort of playing a whack a mo where we're, we're, we're not being able to look at things holistically. But responding to some part of the body politic in Menlo Park that decides that, you know, this is the direction the city should go into, and they have some standing to give that stand some credibility. And I'm not saying that they're not coming from a good place, but I'm saying is, 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 I don't think that it results in sort of good government and a good government, a good government engagement. I'm generally, I would say, supportive of 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 what is being proposed. I think I'm I'm most interested and most supportive of the idea of of an ordinance to the extent to which it would provide some additional sense of protection to to the residents who I think are rightfully like concerned. And 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 so I would be supportive of that. I have concerns about a measure. I'm, I'm open, but I, I don't. If if we give the additional protection of the ordinance, then that's an additional hoop that a future council would in theory have to jump through. And thereby giving an additional heads up to residents that this is happening. Even though, again, I know some people think that it can't happen and they're probably right, but but if we are in that that business of sort of providing just an additional hoop, I, that may or may not be necessary. I have concerns about all of the costs associated with 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 a measure. But again, I have to also be responsive to the fact that, like, lots of residents are rightfully angry. Because, you know, without really any context from the city, this very specific idea has been thrown out there and has had legitimacy. And so and they're responding in a way that that they want to ensure that it is protected. And so I feel that I have to be sort of responsive because I think that that concern is is legitimate and that anger has some some legitimacy. So that that's where where I am on on this issue. Happy to hear from from others on the council. Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor Combs, and I very much appreciated your comments. And I want to let all of the residents know that I did read the petition in detail. I read all the letters and I rode my electric bike I used to throttle up to Sharon Park this past week. And you know, it's beautiful and I get that the area of the park that's been talked about has a different characteristic from kind of the main area of the park and trail going through it and whatnot. And I saw the picture of the kids that was sent in and I love parks. And I agree that we need to protect our open green spaces, all of the comments about mental health and multifamily dwellings, not having as much open space. And I'm actually open to exploring how in our housing element we are going to account for potentially, you know, wanting to have open space in new developments. Realizing that the more we ask for that in new developments, the, you know, higher we might need to go or other trade offs we need to make. So I appreciate that this issue has been raised so we can add that as a dimension to our conversations going forward. I also want to let the residents know, I really appreciate the support of the Safeway site and the other locations that are listed in the petition. I do encourage the residents to engage in the housing element process, and they'll see that there are a lot of constraints. Unfortunately, we can't just point to a site and say, this is the one, this is where affordable housing is going to be. It has to be likely to develop based on the property owner. It depends on how much density we allow, how it could be financed for affordable housing, which is another topic I'd love to explore as we go through the housing element. You know, if if the city does find a site like Safeway that people have a big appetite for affordable housing and the city wants to put up a affordable housing bond to help fund some affordable housing. So we're not relying on private developers. Like, that's something I'd like to explore as well. So in general, especially given this new research that's come out that we're hearing, you know, that it's not a viable option to develop on parks. I think we need to think about what's what's our objective in this moment? In this discussion, what's the end goal? And I agree with the 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 spirit of the petition, which is don't use the parks, the the open space, the green space in the housing element. I think that's why this agenda item had the urgency, has the urgency, why we're hearing this tonight. For those of you who don't attend typical council meetings or kind of follow our work, we have goal setting and priority setting. Unfortunately, we don't have all the time in the world and all staff resources and capacity to take on every issue at all times. And so our council prioritized a series of issues for this year. And the housing element being one of our very important topics. And so for parks, as it relates to the housing element, I think it merits, you know, this conversation. Talking about perpetuity and ballot measures, to me, seems beyond the scope of the immediacy of this topic. And I want to make sure we're spending our time on our stated council priorities, which include the housing element. And I'm concerned that diverting attention into a ballot measure that is beyond what we have been planning to work on all year and where we have limited staff right now and we have the state mandate that this just isn't a good use of time. And so I'm actually very much aligned with Mayor Combs on this issue. And I'd actually, at this point, I even like to make a motion to direct staff to analyze and return with the zoning ordinance prohibiting the conversion of any city parks to different municipal purposes. And that's what I'm I'm proposing.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Are there other comments? Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you. So as a lifelong user of city parks and an advocate for healthy communities, I'm 100% committed to preserving and expanding parks for all our Menlo Park residents. But Menlo Park's housing element requirements, authorizing opportunities for 3,000 new housing units will increase Menlo Park's overall housing density as they are ultimately built. This development makes our parklands and facilities even more important to our community. The city and our consultants are talking to the community to gather information about where new high, now where new housing should be cited. I want to make sure that everyone knows that there's a meeting Thursday night this week at 6:30. And I encourage everyone to attend and participate in that community meeting about the housing element update. The city owns some parcels of land that might be realistic sites for some of the much needed affordable housing. However, it's important to note for everyone to know that the parklands are not viable sites for housing in part because they cannot be used to meet our housing element requirements. With this in mind, I'm opposed to devoting city resources and staff time to any unnecessary exercise of studying and preparing a new ordinance or ballot measure. I'd like to see those resources focused on the housing element and on equitable land use across all of Menlo Park. We need to take this opportunity to do that really well. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash. Councilmember Taylor. Would you like to chime in?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Actually, I have a question. And that is just thinking about a few of the comments that were made because I I hear what Mayor Combs said earlier, just about addressing concerns of the of the public. I have concerns that we are going to protect land before we look at further affirming fair housing in Menlo Park. I have concerns about creating protections around land based on Menlo Park's land use history. And so do we really need an ordinance? I guess this is, this question is for the city attorney. Do we need an ordinance to protect land? I, it has not been an idea in my mind is to use any park space to develop anything on. And so my question for the city attorney is, do we need an ordinance to actually fulfill that if this land wasn't even on the list and cannot be considered anyways and has its own protections already?
Yeah, so no, I don't think for 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 parks that are strictly construed according to the terms of their dedication, then no, I don't think. And and the terms of the dedication are very clear and narrow that they can only be utilized for park purposes, then no, I don't think in that circumstance an ordinance would do anything because that protection is already occupied by state law. There, there is, there are options to convert the use of certain parks, which I had mentioned earlier. And and I admittedly am not the expert on conversion of parked uses and would likely want to spend more time looking at the preemption issue, issues for any ordinance. But there are certain circumstances where parks can be converted to other uses. And so, you know, according, whatever the council's intention is, that there could be an ordinance that could be narrowly tailored to fill in those spaces. I think, you know, I haven't drafted anything yet, but I think that that's possible.
I have a follow up question. And and that is, and I know that this, our conversation isn't primarily about the housing element, it's about the ordinance. But it's my understanding in order for a site to be considered for the housing element that it has to be a viable piece of land that gets up for sale or the developer agrees or the owner agrees to develop it. So even if we suggest a site, it doesn't necessarily mean that's going to be a an opportunity site for housing.
Yeah, I think that's exactly right. So there's different standards for the feasibility of of vacant and non vacant sites to be included in your in your housing element inventory. And and I think that you stated the broad standard perfectly that not all sites are eligible for inclusion on your inventory. And ultimately, HCD gets to decide if you put the correct sites on your inventory. But the city's consultant M group has to study the feasibility of every site for compliance with state housing element law before we'd recommend that it be included in your housing element. And I do think that for the reasons that you just described and the reasons that I previously described, it is very possible that HCD would say these are infeasible due to the original dedication purposes. Yeah, dedication purposes and language of the original dedication.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, Mr. Doherty, have you reviewed any of the original dedications of the parks?
No, I haven't.
Have you identified any of them as to where they are?
No, I wouldn't assume they're very old and they'd be difficult to find, but no, I haven't.
And so if we can't find them, wouldn't ordinance dedicating all of the parks set forth the dedication then to prohibit development in them?
Yeah, I mean, I think the ordinance could speak to those parks that are, were dedicated by the city and the dedication was broad enough that there is some possibility that they could be converted to other uses.
And as we sit here tonight, not having seen any of the prior dedications, it is possible that we don't have dedications protecting the parks at this, at this moment. Is that right?
Well, I think the the way that the Attorney General has interpreted the term dedication in state law is how the property was acquired. So we'd have to go back to the original the original acquisition documents by the city. And my experience with cities that were incorporated around the same time as Menlo Park is a lot of times those dedications are just notations on maps. They're not like what we now use, which is these long purchase and sale agreements and easements, grant deeds that describe this property and the dedication in great detail. So yes, I mean, I think it is very possible that even if the county recorder has all dedications on file, that we might not get a ton of info from them.
So as we sit here tonight, we simply don't know whether which which parks are dead, are protected from develop and because we don't have those dedications and don't even know if they exist.
I, yeah, I certainly don't have them or know anything about them and have not started looking into them.
Okay, so the only way for the council tonight to give assurance to the public that there will be no dedic, that the Okay, so the only way for the council tonight to give assurance to the public that there will be no, that there'll be no development in parks would be to go ahead and a proven ordinance that would, well, let me, let me, I'll back up. If the council tonight wanted to go ahead and assure the public there won't be development parks, it could have proven ordinance that would go ahead and state that they get the dedication of all city parks strictly, and then fill any loopholes in with respect to what is known about those parks. Are you going ahead and shoring it up so that development won't be able to take place in them in the future? Is that right?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think generally the, like, loophole idea that you've mentioned makes sense to me. You know, I still am not, have not entirely wrapped my head around the preemption issue and like where we can regulate, given that the state has occupied this area to a certain extent. But as I read the state law, there is a path forward for certain types of parks to be utilized for other uses than just strictly a park. And so, right now, you know, without being the expert again, I, tonight, I will be eventually. There, I do think is some area to, to regulate without being preempted.
And if we were to go ahead and pass an ordinance that dedicated all of the parks strictly, filled in the loopholes, but then indicated that you could still go ahead and change the use in the park for municipal use upon the vote of the public. That's something that would go ahead and make it possible that if should accounts in the future identify municipal use they thought was important enough, they could still do so, they just have to have the public vote on it, right?
I think so, yeah, we, we'd need, you know, we, we would need to adapt our own definitions of municipal use to then not be subject to past legal court and AG opinions.
Okay, so I'm going to turn to Councilmember Woolison and ask if I can make a friendly amendment that within the, the ordinance that you've that you've made your motion on, that we would include in it a dedication for all city parks that would go ahead and strictly dedicate them, and then also allow for the loopholes, whatever loopholes that have been identified within state law to be filled in that, but that a vote of the public be allowed for municipal use for, for when the council identifies municipal use. Do you accept that as a friendly amendment?
I, I think I need that restated.
Yeah, yeah, so the, the first part is that it would strictly, it would, the, the ordinance would would go ahead and dedicate all of the city parks identified within it as a, as, as a dedicated park. Because that's the threshold, that's the first threshold to go ahead and protect from development, is that the park's dedicated park. So strictly dedicated that it can't be developed in. And then the next would be that it would allow for municipal use upon the vote of the public. And we would identify what those municipal uses are within the, within the ordinance.
I'm not interested right now in any vote of the public.
It would be, if you don't, if you don't allow that, then it's a total ban. So the public wouldn't vote on it right now, it would just say in the ordinance that if in the future a city council wants to allow for municipal use, then it has to go before the voters. But right now, with the strict dedication, or even with your strict zoning, that isn't going to be allowable.
I, I don't think I'm interested in that.
Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and make a competing motion. So Mayor Combs, I'm going to go ahead and move right now for an ordinance that would strictly dedicate the parks in Menlo Park by name. And then would also strictly dedicate them from all development, but for municipal uses outlined within the ordinance that the city council can go ahead and identify. And also that that ordinance would go ahead and fill in any loopholes or exceptions that the city attorney can identify within the government code.
Okay. City car Karen, do you have both these motions?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Actually, I would like to defer to our city attorney on how to handle the first motion by a city council member, Woolison. We didn't get a second, but we also didn't ask for one, and then we've got a subsequent motion by city council member Mueller and how the process should go.
So our prestige, our city council procedures allow subsequent motions once seconded presumably to be voted on before the main motion. And if the subsequent motion is approved, then the main motion is no longer on the table, is not voted on. And if the subsequent motion, which would be Councilmember Mueller's motion, is not approved, then the main motion is still on the table. That's an appendix A of our city council procedures manual.
So who's up to bat now? Is it the first motion or the subsequent motion?
The subsequent motion.
Okay.
Which is city council member Mueller's.
Then I'll second the subsequent motion. And so then we'll, we'll have a vote on this. And then if this wins, then then that's, that's the city council action and direction on this. If this isn't, then we go back and see if there is a second on the, the first motion and go through that process.
And to, to be, yeah, to be clear to my colleagues, my motion did not include a measure because I heard no support for it, so I'm not making a motion on the measure because I know there's no support for that this time. I'm only making a motion on the ordinance.
Again, city council member Mueller, I am going to ask you to restate your motion. I don't think I captured it all correctly, but Mayor Combs, please.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say, and then I will recognize, uh, uh, Councilmember Taylor. Just to be clear, Councilwoman Mueller, I, a, a, a measure was not my preferred outcome. But I did not say I could not be supportive of it. And, and so, and so I, I don't mean double speak there, but, but, but I would just suggest that you make whatever motion you want to make and, and, and see if you, you get support from it. If, if that's the motion that's on the table, then that's the motion that's on the table and we can go.
I'm going to bifurcate the issue if I revisit it. I'll measure I will, but I'm going to bifurcate it because I think I have a better shot of getting this passed. So I'm going to deal with the ordinance first, and the motion is for an ordinance that dedicates all parks in the city in every district by name, makes clear that they're strictly dedicated and, and protected from development. Okay, unless, for the exception of municipal use, as a result of, of and a, a vote of the public and, and then unless we're pull, or vote of the public, and I'm referring to California Government Code 3711, 1.1. But this ordinance would require a vote of the public for municipal news. And the city attorney can return to the city council with a list of municipal uses for consideration. And then the motion is also that the city attorney then would, uh, would go ahead and make sure all other exceptions to developments in a park under California law would be taken care of within the ordinance. And that, that motion is going to be brought back to us for consideration at a later meeting. Okay, does that make sense?
We're going to find out. All right, so what I have is a motion on the floor by city council member Mueller and a second by Mayor Combs to directing the city attorney to draft an ordinate, ordinance that dedicates all parks within the city as dedicated parks and protected from development, unless for the exception of municipal use by a vote of the public. And for the city attorney to return a list of municipal uses for city council consideration, and for the city attorney to rectify the loopholes identified in the state law for consideration at a later meeting.
That's correct.
All right. Are there city council question or discussion?
Councilmember Woolison.
Thank you. And Mayor Combs and my council colleagues, I don't, I don't know about you, but I'm feeling like this, this topic is, is moving quite quickly, and I don't feel, I feel like a study session to Mayor Combs, your earlier point about just the bigger picture of this. That's what I would propose doing at, at this point. I don't know if there's an appetite for this. Otherwise, this is feeling very rushed. And I, I think, I, I just wanted to put that out there.
Councilmember Mueller.
In response, the item would be coming back to us for consideration, so we're not adopting the ordinance tonight. We're just asking the city attorney to draft it.
Is there, uh, I, to a degree, Councilmember Woolson, I, I hear you, and again, I had some weeks ago proposed a city session. So sometimes the horse leaves the barn, and, and I think you, you have to deal with it. Then, then you're in a different situation, and, and I think this is something I, I felt that like there is a requirement to be responsive to, given all of the attention and concern in, in connection with it. And so, that's where I am, but, but I don't, I don't disagree with your, your analysis. And so, city clerk here. I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I, I took my hand down before because there were, I don't remember who clarified, Councilmember Mueller's motion. And my question was going to be, Councilmember Woolson had a motion on the table. I was trying to figure out the difference between the two. But I would need you to restate it in order to, to hear that, to, so that I can really understand which one I would actually support. But with Councilmember Mueller's suggestion or motion, so would this, this would take, this wouldn't take public land off the table for consideration when it comes to the housing element. It would only take pub, it would only take parkland off the table for discussion. And if there was overlap with parkland and potential land that could be developed on, so how would that work? And I, I could use Burgess as an example. That's the example people have given me. I don't see it as an example, but.
My, my intention is to protect open space and green recreation areas. So I think people are talking about the Civic Center as a potential site. I don't, I mean, I would, I'd ask the city attorney to make that clarification, then whether or not the Civic Center is actually part of the park or parkland. Can ask her to make that clarification in the ordinance. My concern is recreational park, recreational spaces. I do not want to see development in recreational parks and recreational spaces and open green spaces that are parks. So for instance, Councilmember Taylor, I never want to see anyone try to take park, to try to take part, take, take any piece of Kelly Park, or take any piece of Bedwell Bay Front Park, or take any, no park in District One, I would never see, want to see anyone make an argument to take a piece of that. I'd want to say that's off the table. Same would be for Milam Park, or Fremont Park, or Sharon Park. Like, all of those parks are strictly dedicated by the city as parks.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, well, we have a first and a second, and so at least on the subsequent motion, and so we can, we can go to a vote on that.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So by roll call vote, city council member Mueller.
Yes.
City council member Taylor.
No.
City council member Woolson.
No.
Vice Mayor Nash.
No.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And the motion fails with city council members Taylor and Nash and Vice, or city council members Taylor and Woolson and Vice Mayor Nash dissenting.
Well, I, I just wanted to say you all, thank you for your consideration, and we'll be meeting with residents to try to figure out our next steps. So, thank you.
So we do have a, a motion that's still on the floor. Is, is there a desire for, for someone to, to second that?
If city council member Woolson wouldn't mind repeating the motion, just for clarification for myself, the record, as well as.
Yeah, clarify case for me too, city clerk.
Okay, um, the motion is to direct staff to analyze and return with the zoning ordinance prohibiting the conversion of any city parks to different municipal purposes. And I, I also just want to state that the threat of parks being taken away is, it would be by us, and all of us are saying we're not going to take away parks. And I understand there's a longer-term, larger thing, but like I said, the scope right now, if it's about the housing element and what's happening now, I think this would close the loopholes and, and give the residents that immediate protection that they're seeking. So that's my motion.
Councilmember Mueller and then Vice Mayor Nash.
Yeah, I frankly don't. I think that if you wanted to achieve the objective that you're saying you wanted to, you would have voted for the last motion. The housing element is going to change zoning in Menlo Park, so if we go ahead at this time and make, and say we want zoning to be a certain way, that zoning can be changed very easily later by the housing owner. Uh, if you wanted to go ahead and actually provide the protection that you were saying you want to do as a result of this zoning, you could pass an ordinance actually dedicating the parks. Zoning is changed by the housing element. It's in fact, an amendment to zoning that goes in. So it can be zoned one way today and then be changed through the housing element process. So I, I don't believe this is going to provide any measure of protection to the residents who have been asking for it and who, to those who signed the petition.
Vice Mayor Nash? No. Um, yeah, and, and I'll, oh, just from, from my sense. I'm, I do think in this scenario, this, this topic has come because the residents in specifically, I think in Councilmember Mueller's district was responding to certain comments and certain proposals that came from, for lack of a better phrase, a, a city official. And, and so in that sense, I think, given that this is, is his agenda item, I would want to sort of defer to those protections that he sees as, as commensurate with the scenario which brought upon this, you know, this agenda item. And so, given that, I, I, I would not be inclined to second Councilmember Woolson's motion. And so, and I don't see any others seconding it. And so, I think, um, I, I think that unless I hear otherwise, that that is the end of this, this item. Okay, um, so then we're going to the, the next item will be I want to sorry for the, I want to go back to the, the public hearing portion of, of the meeting, and that's a K1 ordinance number 1078, repelling and replacing Menlo Park Municipal Code Section 16.86.025. And here to present the item is City Attorney Neridori.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. The proposed first reading of an ordinance that's before you this evening would revise Menlo Park Municipal Code Section 1686.025 to remove the current procedures of the municipal code, requiring a formal appeal for a council member to call up any decisions of the Planning Commission. And the proposed revisions are purely for defensibility purposes to ensure that the city council is the City Council is not, is able to review planning commission decisions without being construed to be both the appellant and the decision maker. The ordinance would repeal in its entirety the current section and instead replace it with a provision entitled, "Call up by City Councilmember." The timelines in the ordinance reflect the appeal provisions by members of the public of planning commission decisions, which is stated in other, in the remainder of Chapter 16.86 to reference a 45 day or insofar as practicable appeal period following the notice of appeal at which the appeal, at which the call up would be heard. I don't have much more on this, but your community development director is also available to answer questions. And we're happy to take any questions. And with that, I will leave my presentation.
I was talking to myself. So let's open up the public hearing as City Court Karen in call for public comments.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item K1 ordinance number 1078, repealing and replacing Menlo Park Municipal Code Section 16.86.025, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a landline or a cellphone, press star nine now. This will be the final call for a public comment on item K1, our public hearing this evening. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, City Court Karen. And bringing it back to the virtual dais, are there any clarifying questions? If not, then I'll actually make a motion to repeal and replace Municipal Code Section 16.86.025. Councilmember Taylor.
House Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, City Court Karen.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So I have a first by Mayor Combs and a second by City Councilmember Taylor to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1078, repealing and replacing Menlo Park Municipal Code Section 16.86.025. Any further City Council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
The Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
The Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Right, thank you, City Court Karen. And thank you, City Attorney Dory for all of your, your work on this. Okay, so with that, we'll move from the public hearing portion of the meeting back to regular business. And there are two regular business items, remaining L2 and L3, authorize one about reactivating the gymnastics program and, and the, and adopted transportation management association feasibility study final report. I'll, I'll take them in order. And so we'll start off with authorize the city manager to reactivate the gymnastics program. And I don't have my notes here in front of me, so I don't know who's, who on staff is, is here to present, but whoever is here to present the item can, can come on. Oh.
Sean Reinhardt.
I'm sorry, Mr. Reinhardt, I should have known it was, it was you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Joining me in this presentation are interim Assistant Director of Community Services, Teresa Dela Santa, and also the Recreation Coordinator who has for many years overseen the gymnastics program, Karen Mahalik. So with that, Teresa's going to kick off the presentation. In the interest and acknowledgement of the late hour, we will try to be as brief and succinct as possible. And I'll turn it over to Teresa.
Great, thanks, Sean. See if I can share my screen here. And if you're on. Second, sorry about that. All right, perfect. Good evening, council members. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present this to you. Like Sean said, with me tonight, I'm sorry, first Teresa Dela Santa, interim Assistant Community Services Director. And then with me tonight is Karen Mahalik, who is the Recreation Coordinator for the gymnastics program. And of course, Sean, Director of Labor and Community Services. So jumping right into the presentation, the recommendations before you tonight are to direct staff to reactivate the gymnastics program starting this November. And in addition to that, authorize five and three quarter employees to support the gymnastics program operations. And that would be consistent with program staffing levels from the fiscal year 2018-19. And then lastly, that would include amending the fiscal year 2021-22 operating budget to include 767,000 total budgeted expenditures and then 450,000 total projected revenues for the gymnastics program operations. And then a little bit of background here. So as you're all aware, the City Council owned facilities were closed to indoor public access in March of 2020. And that was because of the COVID-19 pandemic. This was necessary to protect public health and reduce opportunities for people to gather. So the gymnastics, gymnastics program was significantly impacted as the City Council suspended the program and then all staff positions were eliminated. And that was in the last fiscal year. So with the introduction of the vaccines in 2021, we're now in a position to propose reopening to the public. So with that, this past June, the City Council directed staff to prepare a proposal to reactivate the gymnastics program using city staff. And then just of note is that since March of this year, staff has received unsolicited inquiries from over 100 gymnastics program families inquiring about reactivating plans and then expressing their interest in returning to Menlo Park's gymnastics program. And then moving on to phased in reopening, I'll hand that off to Karen.
Thank you, Councilmembers and Mayor. And so our phased in opening is November 21. We're hoping on starting with the children and the toddlers program and special needs. The operation will be running from nine in the morning until approximately six o'clock at night. Hopefully, we'll be able to fit in just a couple of classes for maybe the six-year-olds. Phase two will be starting in January of '22. And we're hoping to expand the operation to include the competitive level in the adults. And in March, we're hoping to go to seven-day operations, which will include the birthday program, the birthday parties and also full Saturdays. Next screen. So the majority of our program, our programming is, two-thirds of it is for the youth, which is our parent are walking through our five-year-olds. When they turn six, they do more of a, what we call developmental, although it's all developmental, and our special needs. The staff is, we're really fortunate to have a staff that is just so gifted in working with the special needs community. It is one of their, I think it's one of the highlights of the day is working with the children and seeing them progress and move on and be a portion of something, be a part of something in the community that's willing to accept people for who they are and help them to grow and develop. That being said, we also have the opportunities for the other kids to compete and, and it is a benefit to the community. Also, the thing I always, I was going to forget to mention is what it, what it offers to the young families when they come in with their children and do a parent participation class, and that's community. They come in and a lot of them make friends and they hang out and go and do other, they do other programs at the library and in the rec department, and they also just play in the park together. So a lot of the families develop friendships that they continue on until the kids go to school, which a lot of the kids who are in classes go to school with their friends. Next slide.
All right, I'll take that slide as its personnel capacity. And just to safely reactivate the gymnastics program, staff is recommending that City Council authorize the five and three-quarter regular benefited positions. And then in addition to that, expenditures for temporary and seasonal staff. And again, that would be consistent with the fiscal year 2018-19 staffing levels. And just really quickly, the positions would be one Recreation Coordinator to coordinate and oversee Gymnastics Center, one Program Assistant would be there for administrative support, and then one Program Assistant who would provide program support and teach classes. And then in addition to that, it would be two and three-quarter gymnastic, gymnastics instructors to teach the actual classes. For a total of 5.75 full-time employees. Moving on to operating revenues and expenditures, I'll hand that off to Sean Reinhardt.
Thank you. And as noted in the staff report, I'll just reiterate quickly that to arrive at this proposal before you tonight, staff analyzed the operating budget actuals from previous fiscal years as, as reference points to develop these, these proposed revenues and expenditures for the current fiscal year, which is already underway. So we did factor in partial year operations and the phase-in timeline that Karen mentioned as the program would ramp up if council approves this tonight. And the revenue projections are very conservative. They reflect the uncertainty that's still with us with the COVID-19 pandemic. We're uncertain to what extent, you know, that may affect program attendance compared to previous years. And of course, how long, you know, the lingering effects of the pandemic can sort of prevent a returning to full capacity. My next slide, please. And so as noted in the report, the proposed expenditures for the current fiscal year would be 767,000 approximately, as shown in the bottom right corner there of this chart. The salaries and benefits for the benefited staff are shown here fully loaded for 12 months of the year, as is our typical practice with staff, benefited staff positions in the budget. But of course, acknowledging that we would not be really spending that full amount because those positions would not come online until a partway through the fiscal year. So the actual amount for benefited staff would be about 60% of what's shown here as a fully loaded annualized year. All the other expenditures shown here are prorated for a partial year. They are not annualized, including the $99,000 noted here for the temporary personnel. So that's a quick overview of the expenditures. We'll move on to the revenues. As mentioned, very conservative considering partial year operations, the phase-in reactivation, uncertainty about the ongoing impacts of COVID-19. The proposal here contemplates cost recovery on the order of 80%. In typical years, the program achieves over 100% cost recovery. And we expect that it would return to that level in the, in next fiscal year, assuming the pandemic subsides and, and, you know, some, some sense of the restrictions of capacity that have subsided as well. But we want to be very conservative there to give council the full, possible picture of what we think is reasonable to anticipate under the current circumstances, which again, you know, that they could change and they have changed credit during the pandemic. My next slide, please. And so that concludes the presentation. We're really happy to answer any questions. We've put the recommendations back on the screen here for you as a reference point. And with that, we'll conclude and turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Reinhardt. City Court Karen, let's call for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item L2, authorize the city manager to reactivate the gymnastics program, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. And our first speaker will be Michelle Sutton.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, great. Hi, yes, I'm Michelle Sutton, resident for 24 years and a former employee at Menlo Park City Gymnastics. And now at the private sector at Gold Star Gymnastics in Sunnyvale. It's a very successful program. I just want to say that prior to the shutdown in 2020, we had a weekly enrollment of over 3,500. That was weekly. So I'm in favor of looking into the private sector as opposed to reinstating a failing program that fiscally was not successful for at least two or three years prior to the COVID shutdown. I would like to add that at the gym that I work at, with the exception of the three months between March and June of 2020, we reopened successfully and remained open and have remained open following all of the COVID protocols and then some, fully masked staff, fully masked student and parents, continued attention to cleanliness and constantly spraying disinfectant in the gym over and over. We even moved our facility outside when necessary. So again, this was a very successful program. It still is now. We have a very happy staff, mostly full-time benefited employees. I can say I've been there for eight years and we actually have a waiting list. So right now, we're at 2,800 a week enrollment and growing. And so I'm all in favor of the private sector, be it Gold Star or another program. I just think that the city of Menlo Park could benefit and reap the rewards of outsourcing with all the, without the headache and the other financial issues that they're not interested in, in taking on. That's it, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for a public comment on item L2 related to gymnastics reactivation. Seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, City Court Karen. So I'll kick off the, the questions to the staff. And I think my, my first question is sort of going back to your phase-in process, why not start with the population that is vaccinated? And, and so like right now, right, the vaccine is available to kids as young as 12. So, and, and I think that there is an idea, right, that maybe late, late in the year, kids as young as five may be able to take the vaccine. So why not sort of mirror that, that, that sort of rollout?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There definitely is like a rationale, a logic to what you just laid out. We were sort of looking more to where is the greatest area of need as far as like how to prioritize a phase in and also looking to the model that we have elsewhere in the city in the childcare programs, the preschool child cares, it actually opened in June, I'm sorry, July of 2020. Have been rather successful in preventing transmission in those programs. And these are, these are young children, these are toddlers. So regarding the gymnastics program, the proposal prioritizes toddlers and children who have special needs in the first phase of reopening, because we believe these populations have the greatest need and they have the fewest options at this time.
Others have questions for Mr. Reinhardt and staff. Vice Mayor Taylor. To me, by Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you. I actually was wondering the exact same thing. I'm concerned about having unvaccinated kids in a situation with the Delta variant around. And it's basically to me is just asking for, it, it concerns me to have the, to be bringing kids who are not able to get vaccinated and together. So that concerns me. I'm also just wondering, I'm puzzled by the financial end of things and just how, well, especially, I've And just how, well, especially I've heard other speakers say the same as our public speaker just said, where there's just questions about the finances. And obviously, there is an interest, there's some self interest there with people who are working at another gym. But I do look at the numbers and wonder how just what was happening so that the the finances were going down. And I know that I guess, could you explain that again, Mr. Reinhardt? I know that you've answered some questions and I'll also let Councilmember Willison, who I know has been looking at a lot of this, jump in.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Nash, for those excellent questions. So regarding sort of the age prioritization of staff certainly can take direction from council that's so given to to focus on participants who are able to get vaccinated first as opposed to participants who are not able to get vaccinated. That's certainly the direction that we can take and implement, you know, in a phase in. Regarding the finances and I guess what's being sort of talked about here is the relative quote unquote success of the program as it relates to maybe cost recovery. I do think that the recent fiscal years, these five fiscal years, including the current fiscal year, the previous fiscal year ending in year twenty twenty one and the year before that ending in twenty twenty are not indicative of the program's capabilities because of the impacts of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Fiscal year nineteen twenty was truncated not quite three quarters through the year by the COVID pandemic, which basically just shut the program down. Very much impacted its capabilities. Obviously, it was shuttered in all of twenty twenty one. And in the current fiscal year, it would be starting, you know, sort of in what we hope are the waning months of a pandemic and partly through the fiscal year. But in previous years, for example, fiscal year twenty sixteen seventeen, the program operated at a hundred and fifty percent of cost recovery. That means that the amount of revenue it brought in exceeded the expenditures by an order of fifty percent. In fiscal year twenty seventeen eighteen, that cost recovery was a hundred and forty percent. And in fiscal year eighteen nineteen, it did reduce somewhat to a hundred and seven percent primarily because of the number of facility rentals decreased rather sharply that particular year. That's a pretty big muddymaker. And that particular year, for various reasons, there were fewer facility rentals being offered. And so that and then, of course, the following year was the pandemic year, which caused, you know, a little bit more of a nosedive. So in my professional opinion, I don't think that that there's anything systemic wrong with the program that would prevent it from at the minimum recovering its costs. If that is the main measure of success for a program like this, I think the other element that's important to point out is the service to the community members of Menlo Park who derive great value from participating in this program. The children learn base movement, motor skills, certainly socialization. And of course, if they want to advance into sort of more competitive, you know, this is an opportunity for that. As well as, you know, just ensuring that there's a sense of community, you know, among the participants of the program, of which there are fifteen hundred plus in the program. So there are other metrics of success to associate with the program and in which it has performed quite well with the dedicated staff that we have who really are quite passionate, dedicated to to the program. But even on the financial side, the program is well positioned to bring in more revenue than it than the program extends.
Mr. Reinhardt, just following up on that, at some point, right, the program stopped sort of doing facilities rental, right? It was not just that the business, the demand wasn't there. It was my understanding, right? You guys stopped doing the birthday parties for, I don't know if with staffing or other reasons, but but is was that also a reason for for the decline?
Yeah, my understanding, that was a little bit before my time as the the director. But my understanding is there were some staffing shortfalls that were temporary in nature, but significant enough that facility rentals were just not able to happen for a period of time in that fiscal year. And right during a season when they tend to be, you know, quite lucrative. And so it really kind of the program took a hit as a result of that. But it's, there's nothing preventing us from from returning, you know, to that scale. It was kind of a one one time thing, is my understanding.
A council member will listen.
Thank you, Mayor Combs, and thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. And I appreciate you being so forthcoming. And I sent a bunch of emails and up until quite close to the meeting starting. And I actually want to follow up on kind of the last email. So if we're looking at table two, and I don't know if you want to to share it on the screen, but we're looking at expenses and the all of the expenses for this proposed year are kind of prorated for when the facility will be open. So not for a full fiscal year, not for an annualized amount, but just for a portion except for the salaries and benefits which are shown in a different way. And then we take sixty percent of that later or sixty percent of a part of that later. But I guess I asked a question about because it says that the salaries and benefits proposed for this coming year are six hundred and ten thousand dollars of expenses. But in the previous years, it was like around eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars. And the reasoning was because we switched an accounting method where we used to charge kind of overhead things to gymnastics, like maintenance and some clerical work. You got charged to gymnastics, but now it wasn't going to be charged to gymnastics. But I didn't quite understand why, because I'm trying to look at like an apples to apples comparison. And I'm just having a hard time seeing that. So if you can shed any light in that, that'd be really helpful.
Thank you, council member, for the excellent question. And it is a little bit complicated the way that the accounting had been done and just the fiscal accounting in general can be kind of complicated. So it has to do with the difference between actual expenditures and budgeted expenditures. So each year, of course, and sometimes in the course of the year, city council will, you know, adopt an operating budget that projects revenues and has certain expenditures. And then, of course, at the conclusion of the fiscal year, and you have, you know, what was actually spent, you know, what was actually brought in as far as revenues. And so my apologies, this chart isn't exactly apples to apples in that it it shows the actuals from the previous fiscal year compared to what's being proposed as a budgeted expense for the current fiscal year. So in those past fiscal years, the actual expenditures for staffing did include time that was charged by folks who are not exclusively dedicated to the program, as you mentioned, overhead. So like the division supervisor and like some additional office assistant work and maintenance worker. And my understanding is that this was done in part because the gymnastics program did achieve a hundred and fifty percent, a hundred and forty percent cost recovery in those years. So that there was, you know, the ability to to charge, that that's time those folks actually spent on the program. Right? But those positions were budgeted in other areas of the city's operating budget. So I hope that helps to clarify a little bit why it's a little difficult to pull out an apples to apples here. But what I can confirm is that what is shown here as far as the proposed, these are the positions that would be dedicated to the program and primarily responsible for the program. And the only new positions that would be needed to implement the program.
So in the past, because the gymnastics was making so much money, it was kind of subsidizing some of this overhead. Is that a fair interpretation of what you're saying? But because we're not sure, we don't want to make that us, we don't want to continue that practice necessarily until we see how gymnastics does in the future.
I believe that's that's a fair way to kind of put it. I would also venture to say that the it may not be advisable to 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 make that determination in the current fiscal year and maybe even after next fiscal year for the reason that you pointed out, which is to have some actual operations occur so that we can analyze exactly the expenditures needed, the staffing that was needed without muddying the waters with additional, you know, kind of overhead accounting charges.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Actually, I think Assistant City Manager Pigueros might be joining and maybe answer my questions.
Please, thank you, Madam Mayor and Vice Mayor. Excuse me, Madam Vice Mayor and Council, Nick Pigueros, Assistant City Manager. And I just wanted to provide additional sort of historical perspective on how we've accounted for the personnel costs in the gymnastics program. Karen, Ms. Mahalik is is definitely one of our institutional memories and she can go back even further than I can. So I encourage her to chime in here if she has, if she has anything additional to add. But our common practice with our with our library and community, with our community services programs is to allocate the non-program specific administrative costs, specifically the department management aspects of the clerical support to each of the programs based on the amount of time or an estimate of the amount of time that they spend on each of the each of the programs. While it doesn't quite get us to full cost recovery, it's a closer approximation of the costs incurred by the program and then subsequently recovered by the fees. At to Councilmember Wilson's question and Mr. Reinhardt's statement, I entirely sort of agree that the first year is not representative of allocations and their and their and I we would expect or it's reasonable to expect that there's a greater level of effort to restart the program from a number of perspectives. And so the first year that we do this, I wouldn't, I would argue is not representative of the administrative costs going forward. Therefore, I wouldn't necessarily suggest or recommend that we use that as a baseline for calculating future revenues. But in addition to Councilmember Wilson's comment and question, as we begin to reallocate those fixed costs, the costs in other programs decrease. So it's a it's a zero sum game. And in many regards, we're taking a fixed overhead cost and dividing it across more programs based on the number of hours supported that is provided to those programs. Except in the instance where there may be a program specific staffing augmentation, which in most cases in the past have arisen through the expansion of programs. And again, Ms. Mahalik can can give us a little more historical reference there if that's if the council would like to receive that information.
Vice Mayor Nash, did you have additional questions?
Do. And I'm trying to figure out how to how to pull this together. I guess my experience looking at some of the well, my experience has been that I thought we did, in fact, allocate administrative services, maintenance services, things like that to the general areas which they were serving. And so I'm surprised to see a change. Is that happening everywhere or is that only in this situation?
Madam Vice Mayor, the I think what I understood, Mr. Reinhardt, to say is that this year is a very different year compared to previous years. And we have not changed our accounting methods. We will, beginning in next year's budget, we will begin to allocate the overhead costs to the programs as we as our best estimate. Of course, that changes over time. I think the issue here is the council could give us direction, I think, to to include an estimated overhead. That will be very different this year than it will be next year. This council meeting is a great example of that, the amount of time that our team has put together to develop this reopening plan and all those staff hours in would unlikely or unlikely to occur in a regular year. So to the extent that it makes sense to charge the program directly, it'll increase the deficit for the first year. Since, you know, and so I think it's not inconsistent. It's it's a it's a factor of a very unusual two years in this particular program's history that I hope never happens again. And so I hope that answers your question.
Well, actually, but what about, I guess what I'm wondering is it seems to me, especially in times of COVID, that you've got it. This will require quite a bit of extra maintenance. And so how does that, I guess I understand from the report that the teachers will be taking some time out of every hour to do some some of that hygiene, the the cleaning. But I would also assume that this is putting, you know, we'll be asking our maintenance staff and who are already working a hard, I am sure, to be taking over another facility. How does that? I certainly understand staff reports. Those are more one offs, but there's certainly how do we look at a more robust number when we're thinking about opening this? You know, what are the costs involved? And also, how do we think about it for the following year, assuming that we're actually have a program up and running? So we're not just looking at what the partial year this year is and how to how to factor that in, but also ongoing, what are going to be the the regular costs that we're talking about?
Sure. And I think to that question, what I would hope to convey here is that part of it is
I can actually energize for, I just want to like staff can't answer every single question and every single permutation of a possibility during a pandemic. Like, right? And so I do think it's like, it's it's somewhat frustrating to hear these sort of like, it's a thousand questions about like every single possibility or every single permutation. This item is back here specifically at the direction of council. Council told staff that it wanted to reactivate the program. And so staff, which I think was not really that invested in this and saw lots of concerns, has brought us back after lots of effort and lots of time and lots of work, a reinvestment, a reopening plan. And so it just is sort of like, well, I mean, these are the costs. This is what it looks like. They can't answer every single question for you. They can't have everything button up for you. And I just think it is, it's really unfair to engage in this, just like question after question after question, because I have to have every question answered. That's not the real world. That's not the world we're in right now.
So the reason why I'm asking is because I don't understand why we're changing the way we allocate things. And because when you compare, I am trying to look forward and say, does this program make sense financially to be going forward? I'm, you know, I am not trying to nickel and dime it, but I am trying to have a sense of if all we're doing right now is looking at five point five point seven five headcount, but in fact, it's going to take a fair amount more. Because a maintenance, then, but very honestly, I some it has to come from somewhere. And I'm trying to get a sense of what the finances are. I'm looking at the numbers and last the last full year, they were nine hundred thousand dollars. Now they're six hundred ten thousand dollars. That's a significant difference. And so I'm trying to make sense of that. And then when I hear that, well, it's actually a difference in accounting, that makes me wonder, why are we doing that? Is that something that's a change across the city? In which case, great, but In which case, great, but I'm I am. Yes, I am asking questions. I am not. But it's I'm not trying to get the details as much as I'm trying to get the general concepts, and maybe I should be focusing on that. Just are we changing accounting methods? Why are we changing accounting methods? I understand that this is a unique situation this year, but what does it mean going forward?
I see that Mr. Reinhardt has has come on. But but I would also like to think that I think that there's going to be some flexibility. I think that there it's going to be a rollout and they're going to see how things and and what does need, what is the maintenance needs are going to be? I don't think that all of that is clear. And 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 Menlo Park has never had pure and real cost centers that has been separated. Because if it did, then like, you know, we would factor and there's a bond on that gymnastics building that the city pays on. So that's not separated out as so they've never had like pure, real, hard cost centers. There's always been some flexibility back and forth. And so and so I think that this 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 like what you're looking for in all of this certainty, I think, is 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 not really deliverable in the way you wanted, but but I'll let Mr. Reinhardt.
But I also say, if you look at the budget, they're actually people are are portioned out by tenths of a person in many cases, if you go down and drill down into the into open gov. And so we actually typically our, you know, my experience is to actually see those costs allocated. If this is different, okay, but just what does? You know, should we expect 610,000 next year? I guess that maybe I should I could ask it that way. What is our ongoing cost? What is our cost in the in the following year? Because we're not just starting up a program now, we're starting up a program and we are going to be keeping now an additional five and three quarter people, which I, you know, of course, that's fully loaded with purse costs and everything else with the. So I think this is.
And your questions are fair. And I'll let Mr. Reinhardt ask, and this is, as I remember very specifically, this is back to us at this very specific request of Councilmember Wilson, which I supported her in. So so I think if there is like this global concern about like this program being reactivated, I think the better question may be towards Councilmember Wilson and me. And are it may be just that it is reflected in that you're not supportive. You're right, you're which is a completely fine invalid position to take. But I just don't know where the 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 I think some of what's happening here is that we won't really understand and see the total of the cost, what what sort of type of revenue are generated until we're in it. And I think it's whether you're willing to to sort of take that leap. We don't have to. We're still in a pandemic. There's nothing that, again, this is not staff. This was the this is council generated. This item is before us because the city council asked for it. Mr. Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you Vice Mayor for your questions as well. I'll I'll try to address a couple of the questions I heard. One was about the maintenance costs. Those on this chart, those are estimated under other utilities, et cetera. So you can see in the proposal on the right column, you know, it's roughly half of the typical year costs. So I would look at a typical year as being like fiscal year 1819. Right? That would be kind of what the program was like for the pandemic. So so those costs, as you can see, you know, they're not nothing, but they're not they're not too substantial, and they've been prorated in the proposal here. Regarding, you know, the difference in costs as to what the Assistant City Manager mentioned as far as, you know, accounting, but also factoring in partial year operations as it pertains to temporary personnel, for example, and some of the other expenditures. So that's one reason you see, you know, pretty significant difference between the last full fiscal year. And then I think the last question I heard there, this one to respond to was what would the program expenditures look like? You know, next fiscal year, assuming that's like a full fiscal year. And I would say, again, we don't know until we've kind of gone through it to see how the pandemic may have changed. You know, just sort of the world in this program within it. But probably the best of bellwether would be the last full fiscal year before the pandemic. So that would be fiscal year 1819, which showed $1.1 million in expenditures, you know. And you say approximately, that would be what you might expect in the next full fiscal year. And then on the next slide, that was offset by $1.2 million in revenues in that fiscal year. That was a cost recovery rate on the order of 107%. That was the year that revenues took a little bit of a dip because of not being able to do facility rentals. So I think that covered the questions that I heard. I'm happy to answer any others.
Thank you so much. And then I do have a question. What is the percentage of residents versus non-residents?
I should have checked my crystal ball a little bit more closely before this meeting because I do not have that information at hand. I'm wondering if Ms. Mahalik could give maybe a rough order of magnitude there. She might not be able to. But unfortunately, I didn't have that information at hand from this meeting.
So we're talking about historical, not not. I know you can't look forward.
Yeah, I think I heard Karen chiming in. If she can give us maybe just a ballpark of what it was like.
It's roughly about 55%.
55% residents?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. 55% about res about 55% residents. The the residents have priority in registration. And so they get, for lack of a better way to say it, they get the good times. And a lot of the people don't like those other early afternoon times that are left.
Thank you. And just to state, my three kids went through the program and loved it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Taylor.
And I only have one question because two of my questions were already asked and answered. And that is, and that it may be in the staff report. So how many participants are you able to serve? And then I know Menlo Park residents will have priority. But actually, answer that first question first and then actually have a follow up.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Karen, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the typical capacity is about 1,500 participants in a typical year and 55% of which are thereabouts.
I'm thinking just by day.
That I don't know. Karen might be able to do a day.
Um, so on on a normal day, we run four classes an hour. And that's usually in the afternoon, 40 children through. That's not including the silks program, which is usually in the evening, and they do another 10. So that's about 50 children an hour.
Thank you. And my my last question is actually, I believe, for the city attorney, and it's just the the question around vaccines and who has one and who doesn't. Is this city liable if there are any incidences at gymnastics? Since the age group that we will be serving, they're not required to have vaccines at this time, I believe, could be wrong.
Libel, if there's a community outbreak or a transmission incident?
Yes.
Probably not, but I do not know the answer to that.
I would add that as a condition of participation, that the participants, you know, do need to sign all of typical kind of liability waivers. That is kind of a part of the process. Typical like like with the childcare programs.
Ms. De La Santa.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that Cal Usha has required us to implement some emergency standards which will require us to shut down. Well, currently, we have had to shut down the classroom, I think, twice during the pandemic. When there is either an exposure or a positive test, we would use those same standards at the gymnastics gymnastics program as well.
I do want to be clear, though, when Ms. De La Santa references exposures or transmissions, those were outside of the center. Not not in the center, but even in those cases, because those families had an exposure outside the center, you know, that protocol was implemented.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Council, where are we at on this? Does someone want to make a motion? Share where they're at, what they're thinking. Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor Combs, and thank you for reminding me that I was the one that wanted this to come back because I I forget. And I appreciate I want to really want to thank the staff for putting this together. And I also want to thank the residents and the people at Gold Star for caring about the the service and wanting to have high quality gymnastics in our community. And I think that a lot of the reason, I guess, that I'd wanted this to come back is because, you know, people miss gymnastics and they love the program. And it does seem like other other programs are up and running. There's the issue of, you know, the public program versus the private program. And then I had asked a lot of questions ahead of time about the cost recovery. And it really does. I mean, I don't have any evidence to the contrary that this we can't expect this to be a high cost recovery. And I realize, you know, long term pension obligations. But balancing, you know, the the place that this center has in our community and the fact that we had a center built for our community. That that's something that needs to be considered. My so my inclination is to reopen gymnastics. My concern right now is COVID. And like, does now, you know, I don't remember when I asked for for this to come back, but I don't know if it was during Delta or not. And I just wonder if we want to, you know, I hate to do this, but wait another few months and see what's going on. I was thinking as we were talking about, you know, the really how Pfizer is going to approve it for, you know, is it five to 12 year olds soon? So maybe that's the group we should bring back. But then I realized I don't think we're mandating vaccines even for that age group. So it's not like we have any guarantees about bringing a different age group back. And maybe we just kind of hunker down and wait another little while. So I don't have an answer, but that's that's my current thinking, Mayor Combs. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, I can't recall exactly when that prior conversation took place. Certainly, I don't think the Delta variant, it could have been out there. It was not the household name that it is today when we had this discussion. And and I think yes, and not not to put you on the spot, but I do remember the conversation. And again, like I said, I I I supported you and pushing the staff to look at bringing this back. It was seen in, you know, neighboring communities, if not gymnastic programs, certainly, you know, parks and recs programming that was happening. And certainly, I knew that that and the private sector, some gymnastic programs have had sort of, to some degree, fully come back. I agree with you now that that I am that maybe this is something that we should, given the current atmosphere, push back a little bit. I mean, I again, again, like definitely accepting and saying that this this is fully something that has been directed by council. But I don't know if it's it's and I think it's great. We have it all now, like what an actual reopening plan looks like. And I'm not saying this is something that should be delayed a year, but I think I probably would like to see, even if it's if you can't sort of, even if sort of vaccines for younger kids won't be mandated. I just think it'll be a different world if it's available to them versus now when it's not not available at all. And so what that day looks like or what that timeline is, I don't know exactly. But but I have some hesitation that that it's now that we should sort of start reopening or start the process of reopening. Are there others to Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor Combs, I just wanted to share that that I agree. I'm very concerned about the Delta variant.
Vice Mayor Nash.
I also agree. And I was actually, I did not assume that others would be that in that mode. So I was trying to get more information to hopefully get more excited about it in other areas and overlook that. So anyway, yes, I I agree with what you're saying.
Thanks. Yeah. And again, I like I said, I know this was again, very much council led, and I remember that discussion because I remember staff expressed some hesitation. I think Mr. Reinhardt specifically and possibly even Mr. Pagaros. And so and so, yeah, but but I think you you have to act based on the information in front of you. And so I think that there seems to be a consensus that you know, we've had this discussion, we see that there is a clear plan for reopening. And and maybe this is something that we can, you know, revisit in the not too distant future. And I don't know, we can, we can connect with with staff on what what exactly that looks like, or if Councilmember Wilson, you want to provide a a timeline, I know, that's totally fine, too.
Yeah, I mean, I would say like at the end of the year, the beginning of the next year, kind of looking at like a springy like thing. Because I can't imagine winter in the Delta, especially when the kids are may or may not be getting vaccinated. But I just wanted to say to community members who are just like cooped up and dying for this program to reopen that we get it. We I have kids, they went through the program. I know what it's like to be suffering in physical and mental ways during this horrible pandemic. And like, we hear you, we're just trying to balance safety. And it's our job to try not to act emotionally, but try to act really rationally and make these hard decisions. So I just wanted to acknowledge that this might not land wonderfully in the community and that that we understand that. And then I'm sorry.
Yeah, totally. Before we move on from the item, I definitely want to to thank Ms. Mahalik, Ms. De La Santa and Mr. Reinhardt. It's clear, obviously, that that this was a lot of work. I know, I think you guys also presented it to the Parks and Right Commission, and there is obviously and so it is it is very much appreciated. And it's very much work that will come to fruition. The program will be, you know, reopened sooner rather than later, but I don't think probably now is is the time, and that seems to be the consensus of council. So thanks, City Corrigan, you you were going to. And since everyone else says, yes, my kid also went to the program, my older one. The younger one, the pandemic happened and it closed out. And that's how I know that they we also wanted to have a birthday party there. And they stopped, they stopped, they stopped offering. So that's how I know that, too. The City Corrigan.
And just given the time, I need to.
Yeah, is there a consensus to extend past 11? We have one more item on the the regular business or is there? What's the the time element regarding that? City manager Jerome Robinson. And this is the council does not meet again until October 12, just to be to be clear.
So I think there's no there's no immediate urgency to this item, but I would I would also forewarn the council that the October 12 agenda is back. But if you would like to defer this, that's fine.
So then where where are we at? Is there a dire to take up the adoption of the final report of the TMA? Um, adoption of the, the final report of, of the TMA. I, I mean, if, if there, I mean, I don't, I don't, eh, hearing what the city manager said. Um, if, if it's, if it's a long. Discussion with lots of questions, um, then. Maybe it's now not the best time. Uh, um, I don't know when else is, is a better time. But also I, I'm, I'm ready to dive in if that's, if there is consensus to do that. The Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, um, gosh, my, I'm, my brain is, is, is really fried. Um, I, I just want to put that out there. If others want to dive, I'll dive, but um, you might not get the best of me, but that, that's where I'm at.
Yeah, I mean, I would, um. I would, I would be fine with the, uh, Councilmember Mueller.
I'm fine with that in the meeting. So I'm, I'm, I'm fine with us picking things up on twelve.
Okay, um, then, then we will continue. Uh, Councilmember Taylor, did you want to chime in?
Mayor Combs, my, my only um, comment is that I will make sure to have my questions to staff um, prior when we discuss the TMA.
Okay, okay, okay. So then we, uh, that's. Sure, okay, so, so that's, that's oh, three. Um. And so we, we got through all of the other regular business items. And so then we're coming to informational items. Let me just uh, bring up my paper. Okay, informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's efforts to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question. On any of the informational items. Uh, City Cor Karen, can you call for a public comment on the informational items?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our informational items. M one, city council agenda topics, or M two, the twenty twenty-one priorities and work plan quarterly report as of July thirty-first. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you may press star nine now. So this will be the final call for public comment on our informational items, M one and M two. Seeing none, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Okay, are there any uh, city council uh, questions on the informational items? Yeah. Okay, city manager reports.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Combs. I, I do want to remind everyone that there is a housing element meeting, community meeting Thursday. I believe at six thirty, the, the time and date and uh, Zoom information is on our website and encourage everyone to attend. Uh, and I also wanted to let everyone know, and uh, council members may also want to report out on this, that the. Uh, the subcommittee, the council subcommittee that we call reimagining public safety has met three times. Since the community meeting on July twenty-ninth. And so I know it's been a little bit quiet, but I want to reassure everyone that we are working. Uh, on our, um, we're working on it and we will be reporting back to the council in full, in the not-too-distant future. And that, that completes my reports for tonight.
Great, thank you, uh, city manager Jerome Robinson. Um, so then we come to council member reports, any reports from, um, from members of council. Um, council member Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I actually put my hand up. I had a question about informational and that is um, providing um, feedback. Um. I don't have it at the moment, but if I wanted to provide feedback on an item that's on informational, specifically the housing outreach committee. Um, what's the best way to go about that? Is that during an informational item? I'm not on a subcommittee, but. I wanted to comment on it. I don't comment at the meetings that I attend. So just.
Um, yeah, I, I think you can do it in council member reports. Um, I think you can do it on that item. Um. Uh, i- if it's like an informational item, I, I think whatever. Uh, i- 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 I think whichever option is, 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 is viable. Would you like to, as, as part of council member reports, r- r- report out now or, or, or sh- share your feedback?
At, at, right now, no. I was just asking where would be the, when would be the best time. Um, and I'll know for the next meeting.
Okay. Okay, totally fair. Um, uh, Councilmember Wilson.
I think you guessed, um, as you know, council member Taylor and I are on the city manager recruitment subcommittee. And I just want to remind the public, this went out in um, like a blog newsletter thing, and it was mentioned at last council meeting. But there will be two uh, kind of public meeting opportunities for people to weigh in on what they would like to see in the city manager recruitment. One is this coming Saturday, the twenty-fifth at eleven AM. The other is September thirtieth, which is a Thursday at six PM. And um, there's also an online survey in both English and Espanol. Um, and the are both uh, available at Menlo Park. All that information is at menlopark.org slash city manager recruitment. So for those of you interested in that process, um, that's where it is.
Thank you, uh, councilmember Wilson. So I have a, an agenda request that I'd like to share with the council. I'd like the council to agendize an item to consider hiring of independent consultants to conduct a three sixty performance review of the city attorney. Which would include soliciting feedback from city staff and conduct a review of the city's uh, legal buildings, both currently and historically. As the council knows, I have been informally engaging uh, city staff in connection with the city attorney evaluation. I have respected and valued my interactions with staff and with the city attorney on this issue. I very much think the process should continue, but it is best from this point on, that the process is led by independent. Um, and, uh, independent uh, uh, professionals, um, independent and trained professionals. Um, so, so that is my agenda item request uh, to, to, to the city council. Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. And what would you need it just for us to by acclamation agree or?
W- w- well, one person would need to, um, uh, at, at least one person would need to agree for it to be um, agendized at a future meeting. And the agenda item would be the request. It, it would not actually be um, uh, the item itself.
I'm in support.
Okay. Um, well, are there any other council member reports? Well, with that, we will adjourn the meeting and I will see you all on October twelfth.